But listen to me around here. We'll, 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 we'll do it.
This is the fun.
Hmm? This is the best, this is the best one of the year. I love it. I love it.
Dressed up for it to take something.
I love educational things. Just you. You're pretty well.
Past incidents after we had.
I wouldn't call you an anti-education guy. Sitting in your town.
Hey, man.
Five degrees.
Okay, we're live. Um, good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen of June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. This is a hybrid meeting which necessitates that the following notice be read into the record. This is a formally advised as required by General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Sections eighteen through twenty-five. In pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, an act relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during a state of emergency, signed into law on June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as extended by Chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, eleven forty-six through twenty-eight, South Yarmouth, Mass. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And below is the different ways of coming in on computer, um, by phone and so forth, which are published on the town website. And we'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, we are the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item is announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have one announcement. Uh, I'd like to announce that there's a public meeting on June twenty-eighth, that's going to be tomorrow, six P. M., right here in this meeting room. And it's also going to be a hybrid meeting to receive the final report on the Yarmouth Climate Change Vulnerability Assessment and Adaptation Plan. And that's also a plan that will be presented in front of the Board of Selectmen at an upcoming meeting as well. But we're going to be trying to gather more public input on that before we make the final presentation. So that's tomorrow, six P. M. It can be virtually done with the website, having that address to get in virtually or else in person, right in this room.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to public comment. Does anyone have anything on public comment? I see a hand. Come on up. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Linda Bolliger. I'm the president of Hyannis Park Civic Association. And I'm here really to ask questions as opposed to harangue you with more, more complaints about the airport. So over the last few months, the interest in the airport's master plan and its effect on Hyannis Park has really exploded. And a lot of it is due to the fact that we've partnered with constituents in Barnstable in their civic association in Hyannis. And, um, we keep getting asked the same question, and I really don't have the answer, and that's why I'm here. And the question is, what is Yarmouth's position on the master plan? And I'll sit down and listen.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
Is there an answer for that?
You're good, Chris?
Pardon?
Do you just want to speak? Are you okay?
No, I want to speak, but I wondered if there was an answer to her question.
I, I, I don't think we're prepared to get into a dialogue on that in this forum. I mean, this is for really public input.
Okay. Obviously, I'm Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth. On, I have a lot of concerns, having participated in both the Zoom meeting and in the public meeting that the airport had the other day. It was very interesting because the Zoom meeting, they did a lot of control in terms of comments. So there was just simply a brief summary sort of at the end about comments that had been made. What was much more interesting was the public meeting that was held that evening at the Barnstable Town Hall in that there were people from all around the airport. There were people there from Barnstable Village. There were people from Commonquit Heights. There was the Hyannis, you know, Greater Hyannis Civic Association. There was the Sierra Club. There were people from up in Yarmouth Port and obviously from people from West Yarmouth. And during that time, and including a Barnstable Town Councilor, and a number of people just saying, you know, why is this going forward? What's the purpose of all of this? And they were presenting some environmental things that looked pretty ridiculous in a lot of ways. I mean, they're computer models as opposed to actual noise contours. And I don't think the things that should be getting addressed are getting addressed. There's clearly a lot of water pollution. They finally admitted to the, the Mahar Well situation to a degree during the hearing. And the noise contours are, are, you know, a mess. They're not accurate as far as we're concerned. And finally, the whole issue even of environmental debris from these planes flying overhead, it was kind of fascinating because I'd been at the Airport Commission meeting earlier in the week, and I watched a jet take off from the runway over Hyannis. It took place and went over Staples and then over the town, streaming with its black fumes of, or debris of some sort coming out of it as far as I could see, the plane going into the, you know, over Hyannis as it departed, which left me rather scared, given, and I'm going to share with you, there was a front page article on May twenty-first on the Boston Globe about the whole issue of the environmental debris of jets and air traffic and what a contributing factor it is to problems with the environment. And so we've got some very significant issues there. I think major concerns, I think Linda's question is, is well-made because Yarmouth receives nothing from this airport and the airport operations. They're functioning right now on their CARES Act grant money. They projected something like fifty-seven thousand employments through June. They only had thirty thousand. If you drive by the parking lot, it's empty. A lot of the jet planes that are parked there are actually parked here because there isn't room in Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard, and they're buying their jet fuel here. And so basically, that's the round of business that's sort of going on for them as opposed to people having a demand for much larger runways and being able to fly to Chicago out of Hyannis. And so on that point, I do think there's some serious issues. And I hope our environmental consultant and people who you've been working with are really going to help you with drafting some comments on this because this is not in the best interests of our community. Thank you.
You have something, Bob, on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I, I do respect the fact that this is not on the board's agenda this evening. So we're not allowed to get into a discussion of it. But I, I, I think for the public, it's, it's very critical to note at this juncture that the, the town of Yarmouth has engaged a professional airport consultant to, that has represented the board at public meetings we've held here and also at the, the most recent and every single one of the LEEPA meetings. And we've filed detailed environmental comments at every juncture, comments that I'd be very happy to, to share with the Hyannis Park Association. And I, I think that we'd also, based on the, the latest meeting later in the summer, we'd like to have a public meeting with local residents. But just very briefly, the, the key issues that really have been driving a lot of our comments are number one, we've questioned the need for the runway extension. We don't feel that it's been demonstrated fully. Number two, we've really honed in on those noise issues and not using this average noise. It has to be event-based noise, and, and otherwise it's just not realistic. And, and number three, the, the town has pushed very hard on the flight plan issues in order to get the voluntary flight plans that divert these aircraft away from the local residences. So again, I'm sorry to, to butt in, but I know there's a tremendous amount of interest in this. We've been at all the meetings, and we've had a very strong sort of impact on the process as much as we can as an outside community. But we do want to continue to have a very strong dialogue with the neighborhood associations and make sure that we're all making those same comments.
Good. I think we appreciate that. The other thing is unfortunately I have to leave, but I just want to say how exciting it is to see, as, as a retired educator, see so many people here who clearly are next on your agenda, winning scholarships. And I just think that's so terrific, and I wish you all the best as you go forward in life. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else on public comment? Joe?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to come to you on a couple, couple of different things, couple of different hats. The first one is I just wanted to invite the public, if they don't know about it, tomorrow evening at five P. M. at the D. Y. Intermediate Middle School, we'll be having a public forum for our two superintendent finalists. It'll be about at least a half an hour per finalist that the public can ask questions. They'll get some information about the, the finalists. And so, you know, we, we hope people can, can come and, and meet the two finalists that, that our subcommittee has chosen. And so that's five P. M. tomorrow evening at the D. Y. Intermediate School. Another thing is just to put on your radar screen, I'd like to set up a meeting sometime with, with Bob Rittenhour just to start discussing the possibility of getting a new track, a new field at the high school and upgrading all that. It's old. The D. Y. Track team, and some of them are here, right? Know that the track is in really, really poor shape. When it was done a number of years ago, it wasn't done correctly, and there's pieces that are falling apart. That all needs to be done. The field also is, is in bad shape. It's the only grass field left on Cape Cod for a high school. And what I'd like to propose, and we can talk about it down the line, but just to put it on your radar screen is take the, some of the savings that we have, that we came in under budget on the new school, and somehow apply it or move it to doing this upgrade at the high school. So nothing to worry about now. Something we can talk about maybe to get on town meeting floor for the fall. The last item, well, another item is I saw Superintendent Woodbury here and to talk about commitment. She's in her last, last week of being leader of the school district. She's been committed to this district for eighteen years. What an incredible ride she's had. She's brought this school to the D. Y. Advantage. And you'll see in a few minutes how, how she has brought the school district and everyone up to tremendous, tremendous feats. And I'd like to just acknowledge Carol for her, her wonderful leadership over the eighteen years. I came in and I said, geez, we're going to have to sign you up for Meetings Anonymous next week because, you know, she's not, she's going to want to go to every single meeting but not have a really need to it. So I congratulate her on her, her, her accomplishments, and I wish her the very best. Speaking of accomplishments and dedication, I'd also like to just put out a, a word of support for Deb Clark for the Recreation Commission. You know, I've been on a number of different committees over the past twenty-five years in the town and on Cape Cod, and I've worked with a number of different people on the Cape and in this community. And there's no one by far that I'd like to have on a committee than Deb Clark. She's hardworking. She's dedicated. She's forward-thinking. She's there for everything. She's, she's for the town of Yarmouth. She, she's an institution, you know, and that's what she brings. She brings that institutional history to the, to the board. And I really feel that the Selectmen really should consider reappointing her to the Recreation Commission because I feel that she would continue to do a great job. And I believe it's been thirty-plus years she's been on that, that board. But there's a reason why. It's because of her dedication and commitment to that board. So that's all I've got, and thank you, and have a good summer.
All right, thank you, Joe. Dan said there was somebody on the screen that was.
Two hands up. I have Vida Morris.
Okay, we'll take Vida. Vida, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I, I hate to change the subject. It was so interesting, especially about the airport. But I'm going to talk about the housing situation. And, uh, you know, the taxpayers of Yarmouth contributed nearly three million dollars to the, the Commons project there, uh, in the Cavalier area. And now literally one of the buildings went up in smoke the other day. I, it makes you wonder what kind of building materials were used, that an entire building is now unusable. I, I just, I, I don't even know what, what to think about it. And this segues into I see we have a new project. As a matter of fact, the one property over from this one that I'm just talking about, somebody new wants to come in and the people, from the materials that I read in the packet, it would appear that the proposers are not the least bit interested in local bylaws or, or, you know, the desires of the, the, the local community and whatever. They just put together something. It, it looks like it was done at a, a speed of light, to say nothing of the people in Boston who are, you know, participating in, are the leaders of these housing scams, who seem to be, you know, they're ready to, to, they only give you a twenty-day extension to make a presentation on behalf of the board. So I mean, I guess they're, they're, they've been laboring, as I said, at the speed of light there. I'm, I'm, I'm just hoping that somebody will keep a very sharp eye on this particular project and we don't end up getting roped into something that we, we might regret later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Vida.
We also have a Thomas J. Sullivan, Jr.
Okay, Tom Sullivan, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep. Speak a little louder if you could.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
Uh, just to follow up with Mrs. Greeley and the airport, I also attended that meeting Wednesday. The noise study, your town cannot accept. It is done on a computer model. There were no ground sensors used in the study. The data is old. It goes back to August twenty-two. Just on, and they, they kind of showed it at different altitudes, but the altitudes don't reflect the noise. From an aircraft taking off, picture the aircraft, the noise from the engine, and as it comes down towards the ground, expands out a cone. That wasn't discussed. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is the groundwater pollution. This dates back to when I was on the Airport Advisory Committee, which I'm still following. It was announced that there's a new plume at the airport. It's a PFAS plume, and it's heading for the Mahar Wells. I think the town should take very much concern about this. They're so-called to be allowed from the D. E. P. to build a wall. Whether or not, uh, this environmental wall is going to work, I don't know. It didn't work before when we had the other pollution headed for the Mahar Wells. So those are the two items. My question is for the town administrator. Did our town consultant participate in a Zoom meeting, and have you heard from him? It's very important, especially with the, this Mahar Well situation, because we're, they are extending a little bit of the safety area in runway thirty-three. And for those listening, that is down towards where the old Cam building is, Willow Street and Iena Road. That, and I questioned this at the meeting, whether or not that safety area is in a well, a Zone One wellhead protection area or a Zone Two. It's very close to the Mahar Wells where they want to extend that area. And three, the last one I'll say is I had a safety problem, and I couldn't get an answer. I asked what the stopping distance is required from the jet blue that they're using when it reaches rotation speed, when in other words lifting the wheels off the runway. They couldn't give an answer because I have concerns whether or not a plane can actually stop on that runway even with an extension without some type of safety barriers put in. All right? And the final thing I'd like to say is congratulations to the students on scholarships, including some of my great neighbors who are there tonight. Okay?
Okay, thank you, Tom.
And yes, the town's consultant was at the meeting and commented.
Okay. Do you have any, anything, ma'am?
Hi, it's Linda Bolliger again. I just wanted to update what Mr. Sullivan had just said. The PFAS plume is already at the Mar Wells. It's not headed for the Mar Wells. It's already there. And that was confirmed to me by Mr. Dan Santos, D. P. W., head at, in Barnstable. So there is some, you know, there's some urgency because if the plume overruns the Mar Wells, it's headed for Hyannis Park. And I think these facts need to come out. I mean, we've been saying this all along, but it really needs to sink in that we have to have a really forceful plan ahead in dealing with the master plan, particularly in its environmental assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're all set with public comment, so we'll go to the next item, which is the Yarmouth Scholarship Committee Presentation of Scholarships, something that we look forward to happily every year. It's all good. There's no controversy. And it's all positive stuff.
It is nice not to have controversy, and thank you for welcoming us again this year. On behalf of the town of Yarmouth, we welcome all to this gathering of the awards and recipients here. It's indeed a very special event for the town. Not only are we distributing the scholarship awards, as you've heard, to deserving students, but we're also going to briefly recognize one of the gifts to our community, Carol Woodbury. This is the twenty-eighth year the town of Yarmouth has sponsored the scholarship program for students residing in the town who are attending some type of four-year post-secondary educational program. As a note each year, we are, can all be proud of the town for establishing and supporting this most worthy endeavor, honoring our students. And so on behalf of all the prior recipients and especially to this class of two thousand and twenty-three, I thank the Selectmen and the town residents for their ongoing support of this worthwhile and impactful process. The committee overseeing this program is composed of five members. Selectman Dan Horgan, Superintendent Carol Woodbury, Sandra Rubenstein, Daniel Hayward, who's here tonight, and myself. As chair, I want to acknowledge not only the important work of the committee members, but to highlight the outstanding investment in this process by Superintendent Carol Woodbury. As you heard earlier, in her eighteen years as superintendent, she has looked for ways to make the right and best educational decisions, benefiting the students she serves so energetically and faithfully. She brought the same passion for excellence to our committee. And all, and for all of you tonight and all who have received these scholarships in the past, you are all beneficiaries of her commitment to your successful education. And so, Carol, on behalf of the Selectmen and the committee and to all the scholarship committees, I want to thank you for your diligence and your insightful leadership to this committee and wish you the best in your plans and years ahead in retirement. So, thank you. This year, we are distributing forty thousand dollars to the scholarship winners, and the funds come from the Frederick E. Howe Scholarship as well as the Town of Yarmouth Scholarship Fund. We're grateful to the citizens of the town for their voluntary and generous support and contributions to this scholarship program each year at tax time. Special thanks go to Pam Barnes in the town administrator's office and who helps coordinate this event, and to our new town treasurer, Anne Marie Ellis. We have thirty recipients this year. It's one of the largest and most accomplished groups of applicants we've ever had to review. Congratulations to you and to your families for the success thus far, and we wish you continued success in the years ahead. To date, we have distributed five hundred seventy thousand, three hundred dollars to seven hundred sixteen students. Again, on behalf of past and present recipients, we thank you, the Selectmen and the town residents, for your ongoing support for this project. The selection process and the awarding of varying amounts of scholarship is based on specific criteria: need, personal statements, recommendations, community involvement, and academic success. The process reviews to us both the substance and the quality of the students and helps us realize the importance of scholarships on the lives of the students as well as their families. Each of the students fully appreciates the sacrifices their family is making toward their educational goals. And you, as family members, should be especially proud of the, of the achievements of your student. The applicants identified the hardships of COVID that it placed on their learning opportunities as well as the financial burdens encountered by families as a result of economic conditions and employment shifts. Personal learning issues, work schedules, and prejudicial school environments were also issues confronting some of these applicants. Yet despite these issues, they all found ways to grow and succeed. And we wish them all the very best in the future, as they will surely make us all so very proud to have known them. Specifically and powerfully, the applicants identified those persons making the most relevant impact on their lives thus far. They highlighted grandfathers and grandmothers, moms and dads, uncles, coaches, teachers, as well as siblings, and even a boss was thrown in there. Some of the comments that we, we extracted from the applicants were these. Kindness doesn't mean you are weak. It can make a real difference in a person's life. Some of my most challenging events in my life have had the most positive result. Seeing what others achieved, I saw that I could do better, and the town is now assisting. I want to give back and help make the Cape a more inclusive and understanding place. Staying resilient and never giving up are my keys to a new learning. I am a mosaic of all the people who have helped shape me. And finally, everyone's path is surely not the same, but hard work and resilience are making all the difference. And I'd like to add some lines from poet John O'Donoghue. Though your destination is not yet clear, you can trust the promise of this opening. Unfurl yourselves into the grace of beginning that isn't one with your life's desire. Awaken your spirits to adventure. Hold nothing back. Learn to find even in risk. Soon you will be home in a new rhythm, for your soul senses the world that awaits you. And so, without any further ado, we'd like to begin the process of presenting the scholarship awards and again thanking all of the Selectmen for their participation in this annual process. If you would come, when I call your name, please come forward and remain standing up front. We'd like to take a picture with the Selectmen at the end if that's possible.
Hunter Boulay? Oh, Carol, I'll give them to you. Aiden Bullock? Aiden Bullock? Luke Bullock, probably not here either. Delaney Burrell? Congratulations again to him. Charlie Caldwell? Oh, there we go. Congratulations, Charlie. Destiny Caldwell? Eliana Castano? Noel Kreiser? Allison Edwards? Emily Edwards? Who's his name, huh? And Madeline Edwards? Ashlyn Enright? Sierra Enright? Alexandra Ferrera? Ariana Ferrara?
Ariana Ferrara? Alana Hartsgrove? Rose Carew? Not sure I got that right, Rose. Carew, sorry. Debated that one. Emma Coat? Sophia Newcom? Alden O'Reilly? Aiden, ah. We'll have to work with the bank on that one. There's a misspelling on that one, sorry. Isabel O'Reilly? Mia Rubenstein? I know is not here. Stephanie Shainer? Jacob Snowden? Anika Swanson? Emily Techera? Catherine Toto? Kylie Warner? Kylie's a veteran of these. Henry Wu? And Michelle Wu? So this is our class of 2023. Congratulations. We wish you all the best, and maybe the selectmen can come around in the front, or... I don't know. I think they're used to coming in and let's all, let's collect them. So they'll, they'll be good figuring it out. Here we go. All right, let's look here first. Daniel? There you go, showing the money. And over here for the... One, two, three. Very good. Thank you all, and best wishes to everyone.
I'd be very interested to see those responses. Thank you.
I love the one that said, "I'm a mosaic of..." Oh, that was like, really. What a great thought.
No, it's, um... It's always a good event.
Better help than you can get.
So our next item is change of manager. FED Hotel Properties, doing business as Hampton Inn. Change of manager, is that matter ready or no? Just not, we can hold it? It is ready? Come right up front. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Do you want to identify yourself for the record, please?
I am Brenna Tenazio.
Okay, and are you going to be the new manager?
I am.
Okay, you want to tell us just a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I've worked at the...
In terms of your background and experience?
I've worked at the Hampton Inn in Yarmouth since we opened in April 2009. I've been there ever since. My experience, as far as any sort of liquor license or liquor liability, has been strictly at that hotel.
Okay. And I see here that you've met with Sergeant Hennessy?
Yes.
And gone over all the local and state laws?
Correct.
And regulations? So you have 15 years of experience, according to this resume?
Correct.
Or this input form, I should say, from Sergeant Hennessy? Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Just one quick one. Do you manage any other sites at this point?
Not directly, no. The Hampton Inn in Yarmouth is the only one that I have direct oversee.
So you expect to be there full-time? Okay, thank you.
Okay, and what do you mean by full-time? How, how many hours a week do you anticipate being there?
It's hard to say because we're entering the summer and it's a busy season. But, I mean, any days that the... I'm pretty much there every day, stopping in if nothing else.
Okay. Anyone else, Dorcas?
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Peter?
No questions? It looks very clean and very nice.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the change of manager?
So moved.
Second.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You're all set, thank you.
Congratulations.
That's a 4-0 vote in favor. Mark that on my notes. Now, 6:45, that's about right. So we have now our second hearing on water rates. This is a continuation of a previous hearing at which I had read the various changes into the record, and Jeff Colby had given us an overview of what the need was for the increase in rates, what the projects were going to be. Some people may not have followed the first hearing, so my understanding is, Jeff, you're going to just not go over each detail, but give us an overview of what the, what's driving the rate increase?
Yes, absolutely. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. I've got Lori Rosalar, Water and Wastewater Superintendent, with us as well. Wasn't planning to go through every slide in the presentation, but if there's questions about the detail, we certainly can flip to those screens because there's some very good information in here about the charts and the need. The biggest need for the increase in the water rates, just to kind of, you know, summarize upfront, is the capital projects that we're undertaking. The biggest one being PFAS. We've got wells number four and five where a treatment facility is being brought online this summer to deal with that issue. And then we're also needing to do a study. These have all been funded at town meeting, these items that I'm going to mention, in order to look at a more permanent fixed location, likely over by wells 10 and 11, to deal with PFAS because that's a presence in a couple of different wells that are currently offline, that we know that we need to treat in order to bring back online. We also have several large water main projects as well that are needing to be funded. They've been approved through the town meeting process, but they are the water main in Route 28 that's being done in conjunction with the wastewater project. That's a good time to get in there and do that project when the road is being opened up for the sewer pipes, as well as a project that was approved for Route 6A water main project replacement as well. So those are large projects, and these rates will fund those projects. We actually have a slide that shows the projects generally. So this is what I've been covering. As you can see, there's a fairly large number of those spread out through the next five or six years. But there is a need to raise rates to address that. So that's the largest component. But there is another component with regards to the operating budget. So we have gone and projected out the next seven years here, that you can see, using inflation factors that are in the 3% to 5% range to cover those costs associated with salaries and chemicals and utilities, things that we've seen regularly increasing. So these are reasonable expectations of what we could see the costs over the next seven or eight years to look like. So because of that, we'll need to adjust the rates. And this is a component that shows the debt service for those projects that I just mentioned, and what that looks like. The pink spikes are paying for the projects, if you will. And the blue is simply just the current debt service spread out over time. So just to summarize, when we do have big expenses, as I just covered, we're able to pay for those over time, and therefore make it much more affordable to the user. So that's a summary of what we're looking at for the rates. What I do want to say is that this presentation is the same as what you've seen previously. There's nothing that's changed. I did give the same presentation to the finance committee, and they supported these rates unanimously. They understood the need for it. In fact, I think you may even have a memo from them that's either in your packet or was handed out that indicated their support and why they supported the rates. But it was essentially because of the known costs associated with the projects, as, you know, as well as increase in the operating budget. So with that said, that's a kind of a summary of where we are. We do have quite a few charts and graphs that demonstrate the need. One thing I do like to end on here, if you don't mind, is with regards to where we stand with the neighboring communities. And so Yarmouth is the lime green color on the left. And as you can see, the average residential user still keeps us below several of our other neighboring communities, specifically Dennis, Barnstable Fire District, Hyannis, Harwich, Orleans. You can see we're competitive, but still below them for the average user. So we're trying to be very responsible in how we address the rates and being sensitive to the users with regards to affordability. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions and board might have.
You, and then I don't know if Lori has anything to add, but I'm just going to go to that finance committee letter that you mentioned, stated June 27. And they say in the letter, they voted on June 14 to support the proposal by the Water Department for the change in fee structure and increases. The Public Works Director, Jeff Colby, explained in nature of the changes. We found that the shift to a more accurate fee system and one that is represented by industry standards, all based on a financial model, to be a positive and innovative approach. I'm not going to read the whole letter. Some of it quotes various technical information. It says, "The Water Department has incorporated a computer model that determines the most appropriate fee structure for the capital, as noted above. And it also addresses operational budgets."
Mr. Chairman, the last sentence sort of wraps up the letter, I think, is the best thing.
Say it again?
The last sentence, "Addressing the crucial deferred capital, computer modeling and fee assessment technique..."
Yeah.
"...and a move to industry standards are the reasons we support the proposal."
Addressing the crucial deferred capital, computer modeling as fee assessment technique, and move to industry standards are a few of the reasons we support the Water Department proposal. So before I see if there's anyone in the public that has anything... Do you have anything else, you or Lori? No? All right, is there anybody in the public that wants to be heard on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom, Nick, and all from the very historic Town of Yarmouth. And thank you all for doing what you're doing. Just a couple of comments about water. I wouldn't be able to stand here today if my body wasn't 60% water. So it's extremely important. It is a modest increase. I've heard some people out in the public that said it's nonaffordable. To me, it's, it is what it is. It has to be paid, and it's a natural resource that's extremely important to all of us. We generate millions of gallons of water. People come here for our water. We expect good, clean water. And, you know, like I said, it's a modest rate. We have some capital deferments in the past that we need to make sure that we take care of. And we also have PFAS. And if you think about it, if we had a collection system 40 years ago, maybe we wouldn't have so much contamination. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think that when you sat down and started working this all out, your reserve was down to a pretty minimum level. It was like at a million, wasn't it? And typically, what was, going back, say, five or 10 years, what were those reserve levels at on average?
I would say on average, it was closer to the $4 million level, but we didn't have the capital expenses that we've just talked about tonight. So we don't want to bring that down to zero. So the $1 million has been kind of a target level to, you know, a rainy day fund, if you will, to support operations if something happens with regards to usage or catastrophic within the system. So that seems to be a number that works well for most. We worked that out with the previous finance director, and that's the number we reviewed of the finance committee when we made the presentation with them. So we'll continue to look at that number going forward. But the bottom line is, we are spending our reserves to fund these projects to the extent that we can. And then beyond that, we're looking to borrow.
And that PFAS expense is estimated at $15 million in 2027? Am I correct on that? Everybody's interested in PFAS. How will that, will that be some kind of an adaptation to the treatment plant? That'll be treating the PFAS?
Right, this is, we would have to add filtration to the treatment system to remove PFAS. Currently, we just add chemical to the water. We don't take anything out. So this 15 million would cover a whole new building in that treatment system with filtration. It is just an estimate at this point, just to be clear. 2027 costs are, we don't know what they are at this point. And we're not sure exactly what our plan is. And that's why, just this past town meeting, we funded the $250,000 for PFAS alternatives analysis so we can narrow down what our best and most effective and efficient use of that money would be, where the plant should be, which wells should be included, and looking at the future EPA's coming up with new regulations for PFAS, so incorporating those as well.
Yeah, and these regulations that the government has with respect to contaminants in water, there's certain standards and levels that are considered not unduly harmful to humans and as that increases, that forecasts changes. But am I correct that now, even though there's not a crisis in terms of town water, there is PFAS present in the general water supply?
In very low levels, yes.
And it's anticipated, I would assume, if we're budgeting this kind of money, that it's going to increase over time?
The concern and the...
To the level of the contamination?
Right, and what's allowable. We actually feel that between the EPA rules and, you know, the DEP taking a closer look at this, that the levels, allowable levels of PFAS is actually going to drop. And because of that, treatment is going to be required. So that's why we're taking some of the actions that we've outlined here.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions, Dan?
I don't mind wearing it last time.
Dorcas? No question?
Looking at this, the rate increases are modest. We do stay very competitive with neighboring towns. And we do need the funds to fund capital projects. And as you said, Lori, you know, PFAS is a big question mark that needs to be done. And hopefully, there's sufficient money projected here to collect, to cover your capital budget. And hopefully, there's sufficient money projected here to collect, to cover your capital budget items coming up, including the question mark on PFAS.
Certainly for the next two years, and then we'll take a look at it again to see if these current rates that are being proposed are sufficient or whether there need to be additional adjustment. But for now, this is what we anticipate should cover the projects.
Question, another question on PFAS. If it is in fact determined that the bulk of the PFAS is coming from the city of Barnstable, the town of Barnstable, what is their liability and what can we collect from them to pay for their PFAS being put in the ground? I realize that that's a wild question that's, you know, out there, but if it is in fact their responsibility, I think they should have some responsibility in paying back the cost to the town of Yarmouth.
That's certainly something we can look at. The angle that we are dealing with right now, and the town administrator commented on this at the last hearing, is pursuing the chemical manufacturers. That seems to be the best course of action, which most communities have taken, because it's easy to demonstrate that it's their chemicals that are affecting the water supply. But we can certainly look at other options as well.
Jeff, can you explain these two water main contracts, contracts two and three? Are those separate and apart from the wastewater project? And are those, are those installations going to be done in conjunction with the project? They're not part of the wastewater project, are they? The 207 million?
They're going to be done in conjunction with the wastewater project, but paid for separately.
They're not funded in that big nut, the 207...
107 million is for wastewater. At the same time, using the same contractor, we'll look to fund the water project, but it's out of a separate funding source, which you're seeing in that chart.
So when you did out the contract, you did really two components to it? The wastewater component plus this?
Yes, and with one award to one contractor, correct.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
So these contract numbers are the wastewater contract numbers corresponding.
Okay. All right. Anybody want to make a motion on these rates?
Why don't we close the hearing first?
That's a, that's a very good idea. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So it's a four zero to close?
And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rate increases.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the proposed rates without any modification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So carries by a vote of four to zero? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're actually right, five minutes under so far. The next item is presentation of a proposed 40B of Madison Village Apartments. Are we ready to go on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just a little introduction to the, to the board on this project. The town received on May 25, 2023, a letter from the state mass housing office indicating that a proponent of a project had filed for a chapter 40B development for affordable housing, 23 units total. And under the mass general laws, chapter 40B, that is the state law that allows affordable housing developers to bypass certain aspects of local zoning in the pursuit of affordable housing. Now, the correspondence pointed out the process gave access to a detailed application and indicated that at this juncture in the process, the town is given an opportunity to file comments to mass housing that, you know, may color their ultimate issuance of eligibility determination for this developer to submit a full application to the town. And these applications would be heard as the special permit granting authority by the zoning board of appeals. Now, since this application has come in, I want to acknowledge Bill Scott, Karen Green, our community development director, along with housing specialist Mary Wagon, who have done a tremendous job shepherding this through all of the individual boards and committees. And so the game plan for this evening is we wanted to hear a brief presentation. We have with us this evening, Mr. Paul Cleary and Brian Bragginton Smith, representing the developers and Tom. So they'll come up to the front, make a brief presentation to the board, and then we'd like to hear a little bit from our staff experts on the process moving forward. There's a lot of detail of some of the preliminary information that's provided to the board, and based on the timing factor, we'll be able to receive this information this evening and place this on the board's agenda for the next meeting on July 11 to discuss what specific comments that we want to make. And the idea is that we try to funnel all of these comments in a coordinated fashion through the Board of Selectmen to make the town's comments known. So that's just a little bit on the game plan for this evening. So with that, I think...
And as I understand, the comment period was extended till July 20th.
Till July 20th, so that...
So we'll have plenty of time to discuss it on the 11th. Okay, good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You gentlemen, want to introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Tom Ruin, I'm a resident of Yarmouth, born and raised.
Brian Bragginton Smith, similar profile.
And Paul Cleary with Tom and Brian. We're here tonight representing Nantucket Sound Group and Autonomous CRE, where the owners of the property 897 Route 28.
Also known as the old laundromat.
Yes.
The old laundromat, so that...
It's really funny how properties get a name. We still call that property over there, the old drive-in property.
Old drive-in.
Drive-in site, yeah.
Yeah, so, so a little background information is that when, when the federal government awarded towns the opportunity zone designation, we were looking for a site to develop and take advantage of the opportunity zone tax structure. And we went into most of the communities in eastern Massachusetts, trying to figure out what their plan was for redeveloping, you know, certain sections of their town. And of all the towns we went into, there were only two that seemed to, this is mostly Boston and South Shore and southeastern Mass. There were only two that seemed to have a plan as to what they wanted to do in their designated opportunity zone, Yarmouth, and in our case, North Attleboro. And with Tom living here, right down the street from this property, we were driving back and forth for about six to nine months. After we met with Karen and some of her team on the opportunity zone, we were looking for property to invest here in their, Tom's community. And we would be picking up the phone, going back and forth. The laundry center's available, it's for sale, and we ended up back in January 4th of 2019, purchasing the property at auction. And we've kind of been going back and forth on our ideas and our designs for the property since then. And, you know, what really encouraged us to come in there were both the village center overlay and the hotel motel overlay growth incentive zone. So as a basic starting point, we were trying to find, follow the general, you know, the outlay or the outline of what the VC3 or the hotel motel bylaws called for, for redevelopment in that area. So we filed the 40B, which we've explained to some of the department heads and boards. The 40B helps us with financing. It gives us access to the New England Fund. It gives us access to the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston. And we were, because of the other eight state programs, we were trying to maintain the existing building and build around it. And I would say primarily what that, you know, caused, and we've learned over the last 10 or so meetings, is we're better off really, you know, knocking that building down and redesigning the property. And we'll kind of end up with something that's pretty much the same thing, where we'll have the 23-unit rental building and a commercial building, but they'll flip-flop. Instead of jamming the residential up on the, on 28, we'll, we'll, actually have a kind of a drawing here. If, I know this is not in your package, but just to give an idea of the change we've made from your package.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So by, you know, by going from what was the existing condition where the laundry building is kind of centered on, the parcel is a little over an acre, the laundry building was pretty much centered on the property, and then we were trying to fit a residential building on basically Route 28. And we thought we had a mixed use there in that the residential plus the existing building. But by going back to a total renovation of knocking that building down, it gives us, I think, a better layout by centering the residential building more in the, in the center, middle of the property, and putting any type of commercial use in a single-story building up at the front on Route 28. And that design, we had a site visit with mass housing and a number of committee members and a number of department heads. There's a really nice tree line on 28. At the corner of Pine Grove and 28, there's a really nice tree. And then kind of at the property lines closer to the Bass River Motel, there's a cluster of trees. And by, by flip-flopping these buildings to this layout and plan that we're having now, I think we'll be able to keep more of that visual effect that we talked about at the site of, yes, you'll have a little more density, you'll have more density on a property, but you've also committed to a certain amount of open space and landscaping that retains what people see when they kind of come down Route 28 now, or they come down Pine Grove now. So that's kind of a, that's two and a half, three weeks of meetings that have led to this most recent change. And as we start working, talking with department heads and committees, we'd like to kind of start working with this layout and get it closer to the VC3 overlay district, which I think it's starting to look a little bit more like it with that layout.
Okay, anything else?
We don't really...
I think so. I just kind of want to give you a...
Anyone on the board have anything at this point? We are going to be having a separate agenda item on the 11th, which we're going to have the benefit, I guess, of all the town departments' input at that point in time.
Yes.
Chairman Stone, the reason we didn't do more of a presentation, I think what staff has depicted in their, you know, their package to the board for the meeting?
Right.
That spelled out better than we could probably do in 20 minutes. It spelled out better what has happened over the last three weeks to a month. So I thought that staff did a great job in those...
There's a lot of commentary in there.
Yeah.
There's no question about that. All right. Peter?
How many parking spaces are reserved for the commercial building? I'm counting just really roughly, to see if I can read my own handwriting here, roughly 27, 28 parking spaces total?
I counted 32 parking spaces, but we're in the ballpark, Peter.
Yeah, again, I'm going real quick.
Yeah, so in the, in the section 414?
Yeah.
There'll be, there'll be a minimum requirement of having one parking space per residential unit.
So that's 23.
Right. And then it, there'll be, there's a definitely requirement for one space for like loading and drop-off, but there is in the bylaw the ability to calculate some off-site shared parking, which we do not, we do not have that to present yet. So we're short, as I've said, we're short parking to cover this layout today as we, as we sit here. But we, we had, in your package, we had some other parking where we were kind, not kind of, we were encroaching on the, on the land next door. We've pulled all that, those parking spaces out. And once we shape what the use is for this new commercial building, we'll have a better idea of what is the total count that we're going to need, and I, we'll have a better answer for that, not at your next meeting, but a better answer as we go through the process of where are you going to park.
So the quick, the way I read it, you were planning on having, having an oyster bar in here? Is that the plan?
That's the hope, yes. Yeah, so that would, that'd be three, that'd be, for every three seats, you'd need one parking space.
I don't, I don't see any place really for kids to play and stuff like that. Is there planning for any kind of a playground?
There is not a plan for a playground on the plan at this point.
Okay.
There has been discussion in, in the meetings as we get deeper into the design of this. I don't know where the play, I don't know where the playground would go.
I mean, because you're clearly, clearly targeting families, and I'm assuming the families are going to have some kids, too.
We're targeting workforce housing, so primarily it really wouldn't be, you're required to have some three, 10% of your count has to be three-bedroom units, so that those are for families with children.
Right.
But the remaining of the units are more workforce housing, and they're smaller studio and one-bedrooms as opposed to multi-bedroom units with, with children.
And I don't have any more questions right now.
You all set, Torkis?
So if I get it right on what you have for parking, and if you have an oyster bar, you're figuring you're only going to have 20 seats in your oyster bar?
No, I haven't calculated the number of seats. What we're relying on at this point in time in the village center overlay district is the second paragraph incorporating, well, providing walkable connections between properties, incorporating centralized parking facilities, and allowing shared parking. So those, those components would have to be solved before you could have the mixed-use commercial use at that property. You can cover the residential parking, but to get the mixed use, we're going to have, we are going to have to solve for the parking for that, for that facility.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Okay.
But there is, I guess what I'm trying to highlight, there is a path through the overlay district of where you find that excess overflow parking. It doesn't have to be on the, the property, the specific property you're working at.
You have something, Bill?
Just, Mr. Chairman, I took a photograph with my phone, sent it to my computer, and the site plan is up on the screen if the developer wants to, or the board wants to refer to it.
Okay, good. Well said. Thank you.
Could I just ask one question?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
And I, I think I saw it in the materials, but what is driving the desire to have a mixed use here? Is it, is it the town preference that you're getting that from?
I would say I, I personally, when it comes to good planning, the town has done excellent planning on their village center overlays. So the village center overlay calls for mixed use. We run into problems, and we've talked about it in these other meetings, you run into problems with banks, you run into problems even with state and federal agencies that they don't seem to marry up that well with mixed use. But you really, the, the mixed-use smart growth villages are really what the town has been trying to accomplish with these overlays. So that's where the, that's where the mixed use comes from. And we've had a lot of comment that, at the same time, people just don't want to see Route 28, which has been historically a driver of tourism to town. They don't want to see the entirety of 28 just turned into, you know, residential. So there's this balancing component of, you know, we're trying to get two mixed-use villages, and that's how we got to mixed use just on that particular, you know, one-acre parcel of land. But with a larger vision of, of the intersection, this is the VC3, which is basically, you know, Long Pond and 28, that intersection is working together in, in the VC3. I, you know, I don't have as much detail of what the one should look like or the VC2 should look like, but there's a general idea of what the VC3 should look like. And hopefully, more of these properties are developed for these mixed use uses and some of the other historical uses, like the, you know, newer hotels, like the, the license transfer that you just handled, is a beautiful new hotel that brings more of your tourism base into, into the area. So I think the mixed use helps with the historic economic, an economic driver of the community. And I believe some of the work with, with the wastewater is gonna help redevelop, you know, South Shore Drive, and, and this should leverage off of that historic tourism economic driver, I would hope.
That was, you know, my first concern when I saw this project, that, you know, we seem to be taking more and more commercial use away and putting these high-density developments And when I look at this, it almost strikes me as looking to try to do too much in a too small spot. I appreciate that the mixed use answers both of the needs that are driving this, but it just seems like it's a very small spot to be trying to pull off so much. And of course, the parking that's been mentioned is one of the, and the green spaces, two of the casualties of that effort. I'm curious about the number, 23. How'd you arrive at that?
So, so it was, in our design, eight units a floor, and then with the entryway and the elevator lobby, we lost one unit on the first floor. So 24 became 23.
Was there any consideration given to a smaller number to condense the footprint of the building so you accommodate more parking or more green space?
You end up, as you make the buildings smaller, you, you don't really end up with a, you know, you, you're gonna, you end up more.
To go higher.
Well, you're not gonna go, we're not gonna go any higher, but you do end up with just something that looks like an elevator shaft as you, as you pull, as you pull in. I personally don't think the density on the property is actually, when you, again, when you go into planning, the property is 47,480 square feet. The, the impervious coverage that the bylaw calls for is 85%, so that'd be 40,358 square feet of, of coverage. And when you take the size of the building, the 23 units is 19,344. That retail trade building is 4,050. The total square foot of building on the, on the property would be 23,394 divided by the 47,480. That's a .49 floor area ratio, which in the world of, of smart growth, that's not really that dense of a project. Once you start getting a 75%, one, one floor area, and you'd be surprised how many properties would be already at a two-floor area ratio if you really looked at, at planning. So form-based code, which is the next step of taking that square that I just kind of rattled off, that acre square, form-based start saying, okay, we wanna see, we wanna see, if you're gonna do a one-story building, you can do this 40,000 one, one-story building. But if you're gonna do a three-story building, you're gonna do three, basically 12,500 square foot stacks. And that's how you get your open space in, in, in smart village design. So it's, it, it's really not as dense as the overlay calls for. It's dense, you know, in some neighborhoods where there's one-acre zoning for a single-family house, this is, this is dense. But when you start looking at, when you're trying to do a village, what's the density of the village? And for example, down, and this will get myself in trouble, Tom, I forget the names of streets, but if you go down to the Bass River Bridge and you take that strip of stores.
In the village there?
Yeah, in the village there, you'd probably find that the density there is probably 1.5 to 2.5 floor area ratio, 'cause you have the second, you have basically 100% lot coverage, and you have second-story units or uses above. That, that is not, if you're looking for villages, what's down in that village is, is it, is it density that, that your village center overlay ultimately, I think, calls for if villagers are actually built.
And finally, just, I thought, did you say earlier, which of the units are planned to be affordable?
25% of the units are affordable, so six of the units.
And what are the bedrooms for those six? Are you doing two of each?
You mix them through, so there's three, three bedrooms, one of those would have to be an affordable.
Okay.
Same thing, you know, if Tom had, if there's six, if there's, if there's eight one-bedrooms, then two of those would have to be affordable. So you have to keep to your overall mix.
Okay.
And allocate the affordables through that mix.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna hear from Mary and Karen on the process going forwards.
We got a big file on this one.
I got you, too.
And I'm gonna try to be brief. So after we got the Mass Housing letter, we kind of hit the ground running and arranged for a bunch of meetings with different committees and staff. So I think in our memo to you, the housing committees met with Paul, Tom, and Brian, the Affordable Housing Trust met already, Community and Economic Development Committee, Design Review Committee, and the Planning Board. And I think in the packet, you've got kind of some preliminary comments. It's important to note that the plans that we're looking at have kind of been evolving. And so it's kind of hard to, you know, be very, very specific on what exactly the comments are because we're not there yet. We had a site plan review meeting, which Paul referenced, which went, it did go really well, and Bill's been great. He's been very, very helpful through this process. And I think our, our two memos are a good complement to one another. Mine kind of says, where have we been? And Bill's memo actually provides you with some suggestions that the board might want to consider in putting together a, the comment letter for the Mass Housing. Mike, you were right, we, we requested an extension from Mass Housing, which was granted very, very quickly. The due date is July 20. And so I think that if we have the meeting with the board.
The 11th?
The 11th.
11th of November, that's ample time, and we can collaborate on kind of some suggestions based on the comments that have been made to date. I think that the plans that Paul shared this evening, it's a, it's a step in the right direction, but obviously, we're the devils in the details. And the purpose of the Mass Housing comment letter and the Mass Housing representative, gentleman named Michael Busby, you know, indicated that the Mass Housing letter, too, can be used as an opportunity for the town to say really, what are you looking for? What are your concerns about? And what do you really want to happen as part of this, this project? And those comments come from the board to Mass Housing, and Mass Housing will hopefully incorporate those comments into their memo, which is the project eligibility letter that will be for the developers, and that's their ticket to kind of the 40B process. Do I leave anything out?
Nope. Yep, that project eligibility letter can be, can have conditions on it.
Yes.
And so, and they do look to see what the town has already designed and planned in that area. And so as you read what Bill and Karen has written, that's what they're getting at, that we've planned a certain look, a certain feel for that area. So as we go forward, even if it's a chapter 40B, we'd like it to match our master plan. And Mass Housing does take that into consideration, and we're hoping that your letter to Mass Housing asks for certain conditions, and that's gonna be one of them.
Yeah. Mary's right. And Dan, you had asked about kind of the, the purpose of mixed use, and we do have, as part of our zoning bylaw, something called the Village Center Overlay District. The Village Center Overlay District has mandatory design standards, so that's something that we'll be wanting to advocate for. The Village Center Overlay District does encourage mixed use. It does encourage pedestrian-based development where people can walk around. I think where you have housing and commercial in one place, you want those uses to be complementary. So what kind of commercial use are we, are we really talking about? We did have opportunity when Mass Housing came down just before the site visit to kind of show off some of our work that we've, we've done, and we took them down to Yarmouth Gardens, we took them to Yarmouth Commons, and we were able to show them the, the types of architecture that we're, we're really looking for, and hopefully, that was well received.
Yep, and that's in your packet, right? And those were funded by Community Preservation Program through town meeting, through the Affordable Housing Trust. And the trust is gonna meet on the same day that you meet, probably on the 11th. And that's probably gonna be one of their main comments, is that the town has subsidized development in this area, and we want, you know, what the state quote-unquote subsidizes in the area to be as the same quality, if not better.
Is that enough? Bill, can I turn over to Bill?
Sure. So as Karen indicated, I had written a memo that was more toward the point of sort of recommendations for the board. If the board, I'm gonna put up the prior plan, and so that was a plan that we were looking at, and to the developer's credit, this is an iterative process, and they've gone to many meetings as we're going through the process. That yellow building in the front was the planned residential, the blue in the back was the existing laundry. So they essentially flipped them, the laundry comes down, and as you can see, the second site plan has a better relationship in terms of the commercial is up front and the residential is in the back. So in the memorandum that I've written, it basically assumes that they're gonna be coming in for a change or make the change, and that, that we get an extension, which apparently we have, to give us the time to review the new site plan, and that they amend the site plan as they have. The developer's amendment, it should be an official request to the Commonwealth and entered as a document of record. So we're not talking about something that's outside that process, and then, you know, we send in a recommendation and they haven't seen it. So we want them to do that with the Commonwealth as a change. And we recommend the developer work with staff and incorporate the suggestions before they make that change so that we're not going back and forth changing the plans with the Commonwealth and making it a report of record. And let me put this up there. These are basically, they're recommendations that are in the memo. I'll spare you the review, which is usually is really about the site plan. Developer, establish a mixed-use proposal is commensurate with both 40B and the town's needs. So one of the comments by our town council is just make sure that the commercial entity doesn't exceed the expectations or the requirements or the limitations that, that is of 40B. 40B is doing a housing project, and commercial is usually ancillary to that. So they need to make sure that it meets 40B to take advantage of the waivers associated with that. They should rely on matters and control the developer, and I think they've done that in the prior proposal. They were using part of the adjacent site, they're not in this proposal. So when they come back, they should still stick with that program and not use sites to which they don't have control. And then, as Mary said and Karen has alluded to, consider the character of the other site plans. The town has done an extensive amount of work to make sure that these affordable projects maintain a certain character, and we anticipate that as we've set the standard, that people would follow that. And so this review is preliminary based on the documents or record which we have, which is our first site plan. And any parallel proposals to the Commonwealth, developers filed a grant for the oyster bar, we just want to make sure with whatever they file with other agencies, that that also be incorporated in the 40B project, so that we don't have different messages to different agencies. So those are the recommendations to the board, which are really commensurate with that prior site plan. So when the developer comes back, we would like to see them come back with something that the state has recognized as an official filing, and that it's taken into account staff recommendations, and then we would create another review based on that new site plan. And let me get this down. And there is the new site plan, and then, as I showed you, the existing site plan, or the site plan or record is this one. So there, considerable departure, and, and it's a departure in a good way. My review talks about the residential being too close and really should be flipped, you know, too close to 28. So by bringing the new site plan, they've addressed a lot of the comments of staff, but there's still more sort of iterative process and work to do.
I have a question, I don't know if any of you three can answer. Did the issue in the review come up of traffic at that particular intersection, apart from parking? Was that, was that commented on by any, anybody?
Parking was the comment.
Just parking?
Right.
Okay.
I'm gonna look over real quick, the planning board, I don't think.
I don't think so. It's a good comment.
Okay, did you have something, Peter?
Yeah, I, I see that everything's gonna be electric. Are planning on solar panels? And the septic, septic system on site, is that gonna be large enough to handle it? And is, is there gonna be a requirement that once the sewer pipe comes down, that this property gets tied to, tied to the town sewer? And third, since it was a laundry- And third, since it was a laund- a laundromat on the site, has the site been tested for
So the, the existing Title V septic was tested when we bought the, when we bought the property. That Title V septic would be inadequate to handle.
Twenty-three units, twenty-three bedrooms.
Twenty-three units.
Right.
Twenty-three units would basically call for 3,300 gallon per day. So you could, in theory, design a Title V septic system at the site. We support the sewer, and we support tying into the new sewer line. And this property is part of the DIF district, that, that any increase in the assessed value can be allocated towards the repayment of the sewer wastewater debt. So we would be, would tie into that. But we also, that laundry center did reuse, did, it was a reuse water system there. And we have a design that Brian has designed, that if there was not going to be a wastewater system for the town, we had designed a reusable wastewater system off of our toilets on that. So that was, that was more self-sustaining than it, at one point, than it actually is today.
So you would wait for the sewer line to be run down 28 before you did this project?
We would have to wait for the project. We'd have to wait for the, for the actual sewer wastewater treatment building to go live. Or we would have to have a short-term Title V septic solution on-site. And that would probably, we'd see the timing of both, where we stood at that.
Yeah. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, is that once that sewer line goes through, any business in that area would have two, two years max before they'd be required to hook in, right?
That's correct. And so, like I say.
You wouldn't want to replicate that expense.
We're planning on, we're planning on tying into the, to the system.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
And my, my last question was, was on PERC. Have you done a 21E?
We have not done a 21E, no.
I, I would think, I would think that you would want to know if there's PERC, PERC on the site, especially.
No, we did do a PERC. That's not, 21E is the environmental. We did do a PERC.
Okay. PERC is the chemical that was used in cleaning it, in laundromats. So that's what, that's what, that's what your 21E would look for, your, your number three, which is your cleanup.
Yeah.
It deceived this PERC, like, like in the, in the laundromat in Hyannis next, next to the, next to the mall dumped PERC all into the, into the town drains and stuff. And it's still a, a very polluted site.
Here's, here's my wastewater expert.
All of the flow from those machines went through a membrane bioreactor system.
Okay.
There was a zero discharge. As the membrane bioreactor viscosity, the density of the mixed liquor increased, there would be a pump and haul. So nothing was discharged at that site. So there would be no, no effluent going into their septic system. There was a septic system, but it was simply to service the small restroom facilities that were there. So nothing was discharged from that system.
Thanks, Marianne.
I do have a couple of questions. Very briefly, Mary or Karen, we throw these terms around like everybody knows what we're talking about. So can you just very briefly tell us about 40B and why that's appropriate here?
Well, I can't answer whether it's appropriate or not. That's for the town to decide. And that's, that's the whole purpose of mass housing, asking you if you think this is an appropriate site. So Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, allows for relief from local zoning through a comprehensive permit issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals. When, when the Zoning Board of Appeals gets an application, it needs to have that project eligibility letter. They then have a very strict timeline to review the, the application. During the first 30 days, the application goes out to all of our local boards, Conservation, Planning Board, the Community Housing Committee, the Board of Health. And very quickly, those boards need to engage and look at the, at the site plans and get all their comments back to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Then the Zoning Board of Appeals collects all those comments, opens the public meeting, and starts to, you know, take public comment. They sometimes decide to get some, hire consultants to help them through that process. In this case, I'm sure the very minimum, we will apply to mass housing for technical support. And then they'll get, they'll, they'll be a presentation. It'll be much more detailed than what's going on right now. And there'll be a list of waivers that the project proponent will ask for. And typically, those are relief from zoning. So you're talking, so you see the density, the height, it's three stories, maybe the setbacks. So in lieu of using our local zoning, they're using, they're going for a comprehensive permit through the Zoning Board of Appeals, as allowed by Mass General Law, Chapter 40B.
40B kicks in because we don't have a certain number of affordable housing units in the town, right?
That's correct. We do not have safe harbor. We're about, we're about 5% of the, 5%. That's halfway to the state mandate of 10%.
So with the 40B development, if they meet the criteria, the town can't stop this, can they?
So one last thing, you have to, 25% of your units have to be affordable to 80% of the area median income. We have stopped Chapter 40B in town before.
Where?
We were one of the two. So, never say never.
But it's difficult.
We, we typically, and I, I made this suggestion to the project proponent, we typically do the friendly 40B process. The, when I first started 18 years ago, the town had just gone through this with Enterprise Drive. Remember, 80 units of rental housing in the middle of our heaviest industrial zone in town, okay? And that's one of the two Chapter 40B applications that, you know, were appealed to the Housing Appeals Court. And we were successful with that appeal. It's one of two in the whole state. So that's why the town is now so proactive on affordable housing. Community development, that, that department was formed. There was staff time set aside for affordable housing, and now that you have a full-time staff person that works on it. It's to show that commitment to the state, that we're going to be proactive. And since that time, we've only had friendly 40Bs. We've only had friendly 40Bs. So this would be our first direct 40B to ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals, if, or Board of Appeals. If you, if you did the friendly 40B, it would go to our housing committee first, and then I think it goes to you, then it goes to the state, then it comes back, and there's like a, but it's pre-approved by the housing committee and the Board of Sloughman, before it goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
So Mary, I guess my point is that these 40B developments, they can happen without the town really desiring them. And so Yarmouth, just so people understand, because I've already had comments that why are we putting another housing development on 28? And a condensed one at that, and affordable one at that. So 40B development can come in whether we want it to or not, under the state regs currently. So you, in the town, take a position that we try to do it in as friendly a means possible to get as much compliance with what we're looking for. And that makes sense. One of the questions I have is, how receptive are they to, we're going to make these recommendations to the town. At the end of the day, are they, are they obligated to accept any of our recommendations?
Mass housing?
Yeah.
What I can tell you is that most towns miss this opportunity to comment, okay? But Yarmouth has its game on, right? We've already had several meetings. We had, we attended, the site visit was well-attended. We're having this meeting, you're having another one. Most towns miss the opportunity to comment to mass housing. Mass housing knows we're engaged. I, I'm, I'm looking forward to them accepting our conditions. I, I am. We are super-engaged on this. I don't think they, the comments that I kind of can see us going with, I can't see them denying it. And it all has to do with what we've proactively done on Route 28 already, the money we've spent on our affordable housing program. We're going in a direction that the state wants us to. So I'm optimistic they'll reward us with good conditions and the project eligibility letter. I mean, it's, I don't have a vote, right? And mass housing. But that's what we're going to advocate strong for.
And the only other comment I had is something I think that you mentioned before. It's hard to make recommendations on a moving target. And so when we meet next time, will have, will we have a firmer idea of what this is going to?
Only for a site eligibility letter. When, when the application goes to the Board of Appeals, you'll get a copy of that application. You'll see, there'll be engineered plans. Everything will be to scale. There'll be, all these details you're asking about will be worked out by the project proponent, or else, you know, the Board of Appeals won't be able to make a decision. But this is about your site approval. This is about the site approval. Is this, I don't want to say simply, is this an appropriate place for housing? But more, is this site with kind, in general, what they're proposing, does it fit in with our vision, with our plan? You know? I mean, if it matched our underlying zoning, right? No problem. Some people use Chapter 40B because it's, it's more defensible in court, right? But it doesn't exactly meet the underlying zoning, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
All right. I, I hope, it's a complicated process. I'm sorry.
Just to add to that, with experience with mass housing and other agencies of the state that issue eligibility letters, tonight you brought up traffic. If, if somehow in your, you add in your response that you're concerned about traffic in the eligibility letter when it comes back, that, that will be one of the conditions that, that Mary and Karen are trying to, like, what is going into this letter that concerns the town? Will come back in any letter saying, these are the issues that the town has, and keep working to, to resolve and, and meet 40A, which is really what we're all trying to really do, is meet 40A, health, welfare, and safety for the, for the neighborhood and the town, the town at large. So it, we see this, Tom, Brian, and myself, we see this as a, a friendly 40B. We are, we're working with the town to come up with something that works for us and something that works for the town, and then ultimately, what works in that, in that neighborhood. So that, that's what the start of, that's what the start of that site plan design is. And we're committed to keep, to continue to work, to work that way cooperatively.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, sure.
I'm, parking. I mean, there are parking spaces, and there are parking spaces. I guess my question is, I, I don't know how they determine the size of the parking space. But, you know, to come up with 32 parking spaces on that property, are you coming up with parking spaces where people can't open their doors to get out of the car?
Well, our zoning bylaw says how big a parking space is supposed to be. It's supposed to be 10 by 20. And if they, when they ultimately get to their plan and show the scale of the parking spots, if they don't meet the 10 by 20, that's going to go on this list of waivers that Mary mentioned, of, of things that, you know, that the, the list of waivers is, our zoning says, you know, it spells out all the rules for developing on the site. And the list of waivers is just what they aren't able to meet, based on what they're proposing. And so then it's up to the Zoning Board of Appeals to kind of really, you know, dig in and see what's adequate, what's not adequate. And that would come out in their approval or their denial.
Okay. So 10 by 20 is adequate for people to?
That's the baseline. And, and I mean, I'll tell you, like, I, I think our spaces are pretty healthy. I'm not the best parker.
I can get more information about that.
I, I'm just thinking that, you know, especially here on Cape Cod, there are a lot of truck drivers, there are a lot of SUV drivers, you know, they're not all driving compact cars. And I just am concerned about the spaces and the size.
I think we can do a little bit more calculation.
We can confirm, but I think the 10 by 20 is.
The project keeps changing, but we'll, we'll just pick, pick the latest one and get that information. I know where you're going, is, is there enough space for the parking on this?
Right.
Okay.
Actually, nine by 18 is a standard space.
Nine by 18.
So the 10 by 20 is generous.
Is generous. And, and it's usually 350 square feet per space, which includes the lane behind it. So you divide the parking field by 350, and you get your number of spaces.
I think the hardest part, and Bill touched on this, is, is, you know, divvying up the parking for the, the residential, which is part of the 40B, and then also for the commercial, which isn't necessarily part of the 40B. And how are we going to handle that?
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? No, well said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. See you on the 11th.
Okay, the next is the Matickees Middle School Reuse Committee Draft Charge. Do you have that one?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I have that up on the screen for people at home also. If I may begin, so when we went to town meeting to request the funds at a fall town meeting, there was a scope that was provided, and it was filed with the town clerk. We also provided a brochure to the audience at the meeting, which mirrored the scope. The scope is in your package. It is the scope that was filed into town clerk on 10/22. So this basically outlines how we're going to move through the project. So one of the things that came up in the DIF committee was, the board wanted specific, sort of a one-page approach to committee designations. And so we accommodated that and broke down the scope into what you see is Matickees Utilization Committee Charge. Utilization Committee comes from the Warren article and the town meeting language and all that. And the general purpose is up there. The specific charge, that actually comes from the Warren article, where we wrote the charge. And then there is a reporting requirement quarterly. The assignments are the town administrator, assistant town administrator, and the Department of Public Works. Staff support would be myself and the Department of Public Works as assistants. And then the utilization committee would consist of a finance committee member, a capital budget committee member, and five members of the public having experience in law, construction, engineering, architecture, real estate, government, regulatory, environmental, finance, project management, or other professions as applicable. Not all those, obviously, one person, but, you know, multiple persons out of the five. So this would be from the general public. And one of the concerns brought up by the board over the meetings to establish the scope is, we didn't want to get people that already had a vested interest by their affiliation with a committee or an entity that would want to basically file a proposal for Matickees. So these people would have to be independent of an entity that would want to file a proposal. Because inherent in the scope is requesting proposals from entities, asking the public what they think, and then sort of having those two issues collide, both the, you know. both the, you know, the subjective and the objective. My memorandum goes over as sort of a project management approach that we would begin some of the analysis as the board is going through the committee vetting process. And that would be purely sort of technical in the sense that we take all the school studies and everything we can get, and then hire mechanical engineers, structural, and others to go through the building and update that information. So a bad roof is a bad roof, and there's not a lot of policy decision and that. And then hopefully, by the time we get the committee and we have our first meeting, we have a compendium report from what the school has already done. We don't wanna go in and repeat it. We want to take where they left off and then take another look at the building. And the first thing we really want the committee to do is understand its limitations. So that is the membership laid out. And if I may, the general purpose would be to be responsible for guiding the programmatic analysis and working in concert with staff and consultants toward establishing a report recommending the utilization reuse of the site based on an established scope of work and budget as approved by the Board of Selectmen. So one of the things we've done here is we would work up the scope and then bring it back to the board. So you understand the direction before we start having committees go off. Obviously, the committee may look at it and say, "We'd recommend a change to that scope", they come back to you. So you understand what the eventual outcome is and how they're gonna get there. And that's really where we started. Your... The memorandum that was filed at the town clerk's office has a pretty detailed scope in it. It has the cost estimates at the time of the memorandum, and obviously, the schedule has to be changed. But then here are cost estimates. One of the several board members requested this. So this still should be valid. We can make some cuts here and there to still move it forward under the budget that we have, which is about $225,000 based on the town meeting vote. So we have a relatively detailed scope. We have the committee establishment pursuant to the format that the board requests. And the specific charges are more general to the extent that they also mirror what the town body saw at the town meeting in terms of an excerpt from the scope. So really, the vote would be on that one page, because the scope will be coming back to you as we refine it.
Page three you're talking about?
Correct. The one titled "Matickees Utilization Committee", and I think we had fun with the name 'cause it's the Muck Committee, so... Hopefully, it doesn't get stuck there.
Just a couple of quick things. Where you list the qualifications of the people, at least by category, real estate, government, regulatory, environmental, private... Then it says, "and other professions as applicable". I think the word "and" should say "or".
Okay.
Or other, right?
Correct.
Because we're not combining "other" with what we've just said. It's...
Right. So it's not one person with all of them.
The other question I have, and I'm not in disagreement with what you're saying here, avoiding members who have a relationship with constituent groups. I mean, what kind of relationship are we talking about? Are we really talking about things that would put them in a conflict position? Could we say conflicting relationships?
I would say that would be a good way to characterize it, because if they're filing a proposal, you know...
Like, I mean, you have all kinds of... Somebody could be a neighbor, somebody could be a friend. That doesn't necessarily put you in a conflict position. But if you're a member of the, "We don't want this on this property group", okay, that's fine, I get it. That person shouldn't be involved. So maybe that's the answer. Just insert the word "conflicting". Other than that, anyone on the board have any comments? I'll start with you, Dan.
How about a conflict or interest in? Because I think what they're trying to get is people that...
Well, you might have an interest in something just as an individual. For example, suppose you have an... You're not dead set on it, but you have an interest in preserving the gym, for example. You think that's a good idea going in. Does that make you in conflict? I don't think so. Interest?
I was thinking more of it.
We all have a lot of different divergent interests in a change.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, your phrase "conflict" has merit. If the person is affiliated with an organization that's gonna file a proposal, they won't be able to sit on reviewing anything.
No, we don't want people like that. We want independent individuals that have open minds, that... We've had good luck with, for example, that drive-in utilization committee. I haven't heard about any kind of backdoor dealings or anyone that had any ulterior motives or any conflicts or anything like that. That's what we want, people like that. So...
Otherwise, I'm good.
Marcus?
I'm good.
Peter?
No, I'm good with the changes that you suggested.
Okay, with those amendments, is do I have a motion to approve the charge?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes by a 4-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for your work on that. What about the preliminary discussion? Matickees Middle School current use policies? We're gonna go forward with that?
Sure. I have a memorandum to the board in that regard.
You had mentioned one organization that was interested in, I think it was CARE, in using that facility for a seminar.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Jill Taladay of CARE for Cape and Islands, Creating a Responsible Environment is the acronym, is here this evening. And August, the building gets turned over to the municipality, and they were looking at a fall conference. So this is a perfect opportunity to work with an organization like this as they move forward for the conference. And I think, Jill, if you wanna come forward, you can describe what you're looking at. I've described it in a memorandum, and it's an environmental conference to sort of integrate some of the sustainable technologies into hospitality. But we're trying to be proactive in this in working with the potential client that needs to use a building, and then by virtue of that, you know, engineering some of the use restrictions or filing. I mean, it's key that the CARE organization gets some definitive, "Yes, we are going to move forward with them, but we don't wanna put them in a position where sometime around August we're giving them surprise criteria that they don't have the lead time to do." So this is a start to have a dialogue to say what is exactly you need, how we're gonna run these things so that they can move forward with confidence and on their seminar. So Jill, if you wanna describe what you're looking to use a building for.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this kinda came about after a conversation that Bill had with Mary Bilbin and addressing the bylaw that was gonna be taking effect regarding food service ware and the shift to sustainable service ware. And it ties in very well with... We were just awarded a grant from NOAA for a three-year grant to work with the tourism and food service businesses to shift them to sustainable service ware. So we've been holding these summits biannually for the last five years. And we had already planned to hold a summit this fall specifically on the subject. So it would be really beneficial for the town itself as well as for the consumers. We typically have panels of educational panels, so we would be talking about the issue itself of plastic pollution and marine debris. And then we wanna bring in some alternatives, some vendors, some businesses that are already using the products to educate the business community on what the alternatives are. So a lot of it's still in the planning stages, but that's basically what it was. It would be educational, and probably, we would have some expo of some vendors that could show some of the products that they have.
So let me see if I can kinda get... Bring some focus to this before I go to the board. So would this be like a one-shot deal that you would be doing annually? Or would this be some kind of a continuous summit, so to speak, or...
Well, we, I mean, we hold summits. We've had them on various things related to marine debris and plastic pollution and litter. We probably would hold maybe a part two on this because there are different... Some of the solution would be like compostable products. And then we wanna get people, businesses, to be moving to reusable, so we might hold another one. It wouldn't be something we would hold every year on this particular subject, but we do hold summits.
How many times in a year would you envision having an activity there?
We're only asking for one right now.
One?
For the fall.
And how... And how many people would you anticipate being present?
In the past, we've had about 50, but we anticipate that it would be probably at least double for this.
About 100?
Yeah. It's hard to know until we actually put it together and put it out there, but...
And what about insurance issues? Do we have coverage on that building for things?
We have coverage. They'd have to have an insurance certificate that's commensurate with our use of town property, which just maybe a bit on the detail... We have a use-of-town-property sort of policy now. We have forms. It requires the insurance certificates. I think the issue was that this is a little more detailed because it's a larger facility, it's a larger event. We wanted to make sure that the board was on board with us extending our use-of-town policy for this particular facility during that interim planning phase. There's no sense having it completely not used. Maybe, you know, we could just have a presence there. But some of the key things, and I think Bill did a great job. He points out 14 items. You know, we're gonna have to go through these issues, you know, the cleaning fee and the insurance certificate, just to safeguard us. But it's important that, as Bill says, we contemplate this now because we're gonna, you know, on this basis, if the board approves this concept, we'll move forward and, you know, we'll have the detailed backup in addition to the normal property use form that applies to slightly larger use such as this. And we're gonna give it to the applicant upfront so that we don't, you know, hit him the day of the event with any changes.
Yeah. So you've said you would be targeting sometime in the fall?
Yeah, we have two dates, and actually, I think one of them conflicts with your... We're looking at November 9th or the 14th. And I just learned tonight that your town, the town meeting is the 7th. So is that... You had said, was there enough time?
Are we gonna have the town meeting at the new school?
Intermediate school.
Yeah.
At the new one?
So it won't be...
We're done with that old dog.
Giving it to...
Have you been in the auditorium in the new school? Beautiful.
Yeah, I have. I was there for the rip and cutting or whatever. Yeah. It's lovely.
So I don't think there'd be a conflict.
Okay.
She's stealing all our voters.
Yeah, don't do that.
I mean, there are a lot of things that we don't have answers to. I mean, if we're gonna be using the space that I think you had outlined, right?
Right. If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is the 14 points that Bob mentioned, and they are questions from Jill's organization. So we'll be working on those to get the details. It's less of an issue of the board getting involved at this level, but more of informing you that after August, it's the town's property, and we wanna set up some proactive guidance so that the CARE organization is not put in a position of learning new guidance. You're not put in a position of saying, "Oh, I didn't know we were holding conferences there".
Are we already paying the insurance even though the school's not abandoning it until...
We would take over the insurance after August, wouldn't you?
That is correct.
Is it after August that we start?
Yes. Then it transfers to the town.
Okay. So what are we trying to do tonight? Just to get a sense of the board as to whether they're amenable to this kind of a use?
I think so. It's the concept of expanding our town use, working with this group to establish these written guidelines that would also apply to additional groups. We foresee there may be other groups that would seek to use the facility. And, you know, hopefully, that could be a contributing sort of factor rather than deleting. You know, we don't wanna have the building just sit there vacant. And I think that that actually helps with the insurance. You know, if we show that we've got an active live use, we're in one category, but if the building is just vacant, now that's a totally different type of insurance. That's a totally different type of care.
Well, we kinda did the same thing with the drive-in, right? I mean, had interim uses from time to time while they were deciding on the big picture.
Because at a scale of this, we thought it would be appropriate to give you a heads-up before we're starting to engage organizations to, you know, for the use. And as you can see, we're taking it over in August. They're looking at November. We can't wait till August to sort of give them a heads-up. They have a lot of lead time issues that they have to deal with, notifying people, setting up the conference, things like that.
I think it's a great use for the building.
What about tables and chairs? Is there anything like that in there?
I know the school has chairs. I don't think the building comes with any chairs.
You think whatever chairs are in there, they're gonna take?
We'll find out. That's what Jill's...
You know, right?
Yeah, we don't know, so...
I got a feeling they bought everything new for the new school. They don't want anything in that building. That was my impression.
Yeah, so those are the kind of questions we're getting from the CARE organization. So those are the kind of questions we have to ask. So, those are the kind of questions we have to ask, ask of the school department, determine if those resources are available so that they're not stuck finding it out, you know, in October. So, being this is really the first opportunity for this, it's the best time to sort of lay all the ground rules. And I think the conference is a great idea to the extent that once you lay out an ordinance, you want to educate your hospitality businesses as to the opportunities to conform the new ordinance rather than, you know, leave them without this kind of guidance. And I mean, I think we see this as if this is an annual conference attracting people from all over the Cape and, you know, other areas that we're bringing people in here in the fall, you know, to the conference. Don't want to overstep the expectations, but. So, as we move forward, we'll keep the board informed. And then just so that you're aware of this, we didn't want you to hear about the conference and the use of the building second-hand as they were doing their planning, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I? So, I too think this is a great idea and as many groups as we can get. But the only concern I have is conflict because presently, we're using it as a gym. So, there's kids in there. The fields are being utilized by kids. So, I'm a little concerned about crossover. I'm concerned about what parts of the building are being utilized and is there in conflict with users that are presently using it? And I know the schools have some kinds of policies with regard to making sure whoever's in a building with kids is vetted in some way. And so, I wonder if that's a concern or an issue that you need to think about.
That's a good point. So, to your points, what we do is, as Bob had indicated, we send it around to different departments. What we'll do is we'll add the recreation department to this checklist and other departments related to children, and we'll make sure that they are part of review. Those forms for the use of public sites and buildings get sent around to all these to make sure they meet the code requirements. So, we'll do the same thing, but I'll add recreation in any group that might be in conflict with this.
Joe, would this event be probably during morning and afternoon hours?
Business hours during the week.
At that time of year, they'd probably be in school.
Are you talking during the week or weekend?
During the week.
But other schools.
Oh, yeah, it's during the week, during business hours.
That's helpful.
So, they'd be in the, you know, the new school at that time?
They also wouldn't be in at the same time any programs were being offered. So, it's not you introducing the children with another group.
And that was my concern, you know? Are we using the gym for one thing and then using the, some of the other portions of the building? And is there crossover?
Right. So, that's, I think, one of the things we'd like to avoid is that crossover.
Okay.
I think that's one of the reasons Mattakee's was taken off the list as a voting location. It was once a voting place, but that same concern caused the town to say, no, we don't want that, the mix of just anybody walking in while the kids are there. And. So, that's a great point. But it seems like when you're doing this, the kids will be in their other school. It'll be during school, a school day. So, that shouldn't be a problem.
So, the conflict, probably pickleball is the one we want to make sure of. That we don't have that.
A bunch of other issues there.
Yeah.
Well, permission is required by the school. Well, there won't be any at that point because it'd be, just revert to being a town. That's a town facility. We just leased it out to the schools for a buck a year. That's basically. So, what fees, if any, would be charged? We talked about tables and chairs. There may be tables and chairs in there. We'll have to check that out. Is AV available? I don't know. Once the school vacates that building, it probably won't be, will it?
Well, I mean, it's obvious that we set up our own projectors and we, when we do town meeting and everything else.
Who's going to be there to do that?
Yeah. That's, the question is, are we supplying that? And that's really what the organization's asking. And we need to figure out if we're going to supply it or we're going to give them a heads-up to get their own people. It's not, as you've seen, it's not difficult to set up. It's a pretty standard projector is what we use. There's no ceiling mounted or anything complicated there. It's the lighting that's unique.
The sound in the building. I mean, that's a cost. We spend a lot of money on the sound for town meetings. Not a lot, but it's a cost.
I'm not aware of any event license that would be required of you. Food, you'd have to go before the Board of Health, whatever the requirements are.
But yeah, I think these are good questions by the organization as to what we need to give them for clarity so they can figure out if they're bringing their own people or we're doing something for them.
I mean, given the town's needs, I can't see the town, like, being available to provide outside AV services. I think the organization would have to take care of that.
At least if there are IT issues there that somebody goes over there and explains, you know, where the AV equipment is that's available and not necessarily run it. But they're then aware that we're not, we don't have staff there to fulfill that. And we have to figure out what the fee structure would be for a facility of that size and, you know, do some research, benchmarking, you know? And based on what we're offering, you know, obviously adjust it if we're not offering AV and tables and chairs.
Yeah.
So.
So, I think the board, I mean, in principle, is not adverse to doing something like this. Am I correct?
Oh, no.
Sounds great.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea. And you also brought up the insurance. If we just have one event, we're going to be considered an empty building, which is quite expensive, and you may not even be able to get insurance if it's an empty building.
So, we're not considering it an empty building. But they have, you know, we've been working with this insurance thing for quite a while. And, you know, they've already read us the riot act on it. And it's very expensive. It's going to be very expensive to insure this building.
I know. Well, we'll still be using the gym and we'll still be using, you know, other, right? With the recreation programs and stuff like that. It won't be empty.
Basketball is going to use it more, basketball is going to use it more frequently now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice gym.
Yeah, it is.
The only other.
A lot of times, the basketball programs would get bumped because they would have concerts and things like that in the auditorium. So, yeah, I think that gym space will be utilized more now.
And that's another point. Even our own programs, we need to solidify the schedules so that we can run these programs at the same time so there's no conflict. So, preference to the basketball program, which I think runs at night, but.
Yeah, all those rec programs run either on weekends or nights because the kids are in school during the day.
Right. So, the idea is before we come to August, we have an idea of what we're going to use it for, what the policies are, what the cost is. And the care organization for the Cape and Islands is a perfect sort of opportunity to do that as negotiations.
The only other concern I'd have, Bill, and maybe this already exists, but whether it's our users or people that are renting the building, but are there ways to limit access to the entire building so that people aren't just wandering around aimlessly?
We have to do that, limit access.
Yeah.
Providing we provide fire egress as necessary.
I think in this proposal, they were talking about auditorium and gym space, that area of the building.
Right, right.
Unless you limit that intentionally, you can go wherever you want.
Yeah, I mean, a town meeting is, it's all-town business and all residents and so on and so forth. So, you anticipate that they run the floor that is of the building if they wanted to. But this is people from outside the community and things like that. So, this is the kind of thing that when we talk to the organization, how do we manage that without managing out the fire department codes and egress?
Okay, do we have anything else on this? Anything else you want to say, Joe?
No, I guess I'm just looking for when you would have the answers to these questions and also the opportunity for a walkthrough so that the committee can see the space.
Okay. Probably in a couple of weeks. I mean, if you, and what I'll do is take a look at what we already have and then put it together for a Mattakee's package and then move from there and answer some of the questions. We'll contact the school department and walk through, probably try to have somebody from there walk through so we have that transition. They have more knowledge of the building than we do. And probably involve fire, you know, as to some of the issues that they may want to see. But if you want to schedule something two weeks from now with your committee, then we can confirm the date and I'll check with the school on access.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. Language for Yarmouth Tourism Home Rule Petition.
Now, we have some good news that the bill that was passed as a local option, home rule petition in 2022 has been filed by Representative Flanagan and Julian Seer. And the report is back from House Counsel, which means it's, you know, ready for the enactment process. And there were minor changes from the actual vote that was taken at town meeting. Nothing substantive at all. It's primarily in the first section. The way it reads as hereby amended by striking out section one is a little bit different than specifically section one is amended by replacing, you know? So, but the, all of the operative language is exactly as voted at town meeting. And the process moving forward requires a vote on this bill, the House Number 3796, of the vote of the Board of Selectmen to approve this form of the change, which was as voted at town meeting. And then we file, which we've already provided the delegation with the certified copy of the town meeting vote. And we would accompany that with a certified copy of the Board of Selectmen vote. And then they would affect the final act.
Okay. So, there's nothing else we have to do on that, correct?
No, just at this point, the vote.
Just take the vote?
Yes.
Is there a proposed vote in here?
It is to approve House Number 3796, page 1 of 1 as presented.
3796, page 1 of 1?
As presented.
As presented. Somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have Dorcas and Deanne, second. Okay. Any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, 4-0. Oh, 3-0, I'm sorry. Peter left. Okay, sorry. Thank you for correcting that, 3 to 0. All right, so that's done. The next item is town administrator evaluation. So, I've taken all the input from the board members and I've. You want to pass one of those down to? And I've compiled them, averaged them out and so forth. Just because we don't do this that often, for the sake of the public, we are doing an evaluation of our town administrator. All of the five selectmen have participated in that process and have evaluated his performance in 11 different categories. First one is knowledge. Second one is productivity. The third is decision-making. The fourth is oral communication. The fifth is written communication. The sixth is budget slash financial administration. The seventh item is leadership. The eighth item is public relations. The ninth item is work relationships. The 10th item is staff development and training. And the last and 11th item is personnel practices.
Chairman, could I just ask a quick question? There's only three of us here tonight, and I know that we want to get this done. But does it make more sense that we do this when we have five of us together?
I'm not sure that, I mean, the numbers aren't going to change.
Numbers aren't going to change, but certainly there would be feedback.
What we can do is leave it open for the other board members to comment, go through the scores and then just leave that item. We'll carry that item over so that the missing board members can give commentary on whatever they want to. How's that sound?
That sounds fine.
Okay, so. The highest score is four. And the lowest score is zero. Zero would be unsatisfactory. He did not get any zeros scores. Needs improvement would be a score of one. He did not get any ones. Satisfactory would be a score of two. He did not get any twos. Three would be a rating of superior. And four would be a rating of exceptional slash outstanding. So, all of his scores were either in the three or four category, superior or beyond that as exceptional and outstanding. And so, for knowledge, he was ranked 3.5, which is between superior and exceptional. For his productivity, it was 3.25, which is in the superior range. Decision-making was 3.5, which again is between superior and exceptional. Oral communications was a three, which is in superior. Written communications was a 3.6, which is between superior and exceptional, more towards exceptional. For budget and financial administration, he got a perfect 4.0, which is exceptional. Leadership, he got a 3.75, which is very, very close to exceptional. Public relations a 3.2, which is superior. Work relationships, 3.0, which is superior. Staff development and training, which was 3.25, which is superior. And personnel practices of 3.5, which is between superior and exceptional. The overall rating was 3.41, which again is between superior and exceptional. So, those are really excellent scores. We will leave open the issue for individual commentary. But one other thing I want to mention is I believe that to consider merit increases and things like that, the benchmark was, if I'm not mistaken, was 3.33. So, he exceeds that. The other thing I want to mention is that Bob originally had a three-year contract and it provided that after his first year performance, if he met those performance standards, his contract would be extended for another year, which it was, to a four-year contract. And based on these scores, it automatically gets extended to a five-year contract, assuming he accepts that fifth year of the contract. But as far as the contract that we have with him, it's an automatic, it's an automatic extension. So, these are, these are quite impressive scores again. And having said that, why don't we just leave the issue open? If that's okay with you, Deanne and Dorcas? And we'll have individual commentary by the board members. But we got, for the public's sake, we got a lot of information out there in terms of the criteria and the categories and what the scores were and how it affects his contract. Is that okay with you, Bob?
That sounds fine. And thank you, thank you very much. It's been an honor to have another year with this board. I really feel like we're picking up some steam here. I mean, in terms of engaging every member of our staff in understanding the direction of the Board of Selectmen, doing our planning and engaging the community as well. I feel like we're ramping up our entire town operations. And your leadership in that is just tremendous. So, thank you very much and looking forward to another good year.
So, now we're going to move on to board and committee access. I understand we have one appointment, Dorcas?
We do, Mr. Chairman. I moved to appoint Mark Galkowski as a regular member-at-large on the Water Resources Advisory Committee. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through August of 2026.
Second.
Okay. Do I have a motion to make that appointment?
I think she made it and I seconded it.
She made it and you seconded it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Passes by 3-0 vote. And now we go to upcoming agenda review. We did see that earlier. The thing, reason I like to look at this stuff on the computer is it stays in the same place. Okay, so the next meeting's the 11th. We don't have one because of, and the 4th, obviously, it's a holiday. We're going to have a special entertainment license hearing for a craft festival, interestingly, at John Simpkins. A special entertainment and alcohol, Beyond the Bounds 2023 season closure at Segal. Discussion, possible vote on a housing production plan. I know Mark was interested in that. Housing Authority Forest Road update. There's a lot of interest there as well. CEDC update. So, it looks like the 11th is, it's filling up pretty good. Does anybody have any? And then our second meeting, which we're required to have under our bylaw because we have to have two at least in a month, is on the 18th. And then the next one after that's August 1st. So, we're going to get a week off and then we're going to do, looks like, three in a row. 11th, July 11th, July 18th and August 1st.
Mr. Chairman, could I suggest that we put down as an agenda item, the airport?
Yep.
To get an update? I think we're hearing concerns.
No, that's a very good, that's a very good suggestion. When do you think, Bob? Because you could, you could have an update that has a lot of meat on its bones and an update that's kind of bare bones. When do you think we can have a somewhat comprehensive update on the airport? How much time would we need for that?
It's very interesting that you raised that point because, again, we just had another one of the MIPA update meetings. We had our consultant fully engaged. We've had a lot of discussions. And we talked about this and our feeling together, and this really was Ron's suggestion, Ronald Price from.
The consultant, yeah.
Consultant. Consultant, that, um, we were hoping that during the month of August, one of our August meetings, maybe on the fifteenth, that we could have a, a community update session for the airport. Invite the, the folks from the Hannes Park Civic Association and have Ron here and have a, a pretty substantive, um, update on where we stand with that, that whole process. So that's what I...
That sounds like a very good idea. Um, so we're, we're going to tentatively figure on the August fifteenth on that?
Yes, let's put that down.
Airport update. Okay. Anything else? Dan, Dorcas?
Yes, I actually got asked the last time we were together if we couldn't have an update on water wellness. You know, where are we with the PFAS plant coming online? Where are we? We got a, an email that Chatham was looking at the fact that the state went into a mild drought category. It's just something we want to stay on top of. It would be nice to...
Okay.
Just see where we are with drought conditions and water availability for the town and a wastewater, um, update that we talked about.
So water wellness, wastewater update. I know Jeff is going to be on vacation. I, there was something I saw...
He'll be at the July 11th meeting. He won't be there, but I was thinking maybe the eighteenth, might be a good night for that.
I think he, I think he, yeah.
He said the weekend of the tenth he's out.
Right. So either the eighteenth or the first, w- w- again, whenever you think we can get... See, I'm, I'm a guy that I'd rather get quality weather and quantity, so if, if I'm going to get a more comprehensive report on the first, I'd rather have it given the time and get it done. When do, when do you think we could get a, a fairly detailed report on the issues that Dan's concerned with?
Well, we can, we can see if it, if it's possible for the eighteenth and have, have...
Okay.
August 1st, and, and I'd like to talk...
As a backup?
Yeah, I'd like to talk to those, um, you know, department heads, because we have, we have Laurie, we have, um, Jeff. I know for a fa- by August 1st, we can have a very detailed one, but...
Maybe we need to split it, but, you know, the, the water wellness issues are time-sensitive. You know, we're, we're heading into that, that hot period of time. So the longer we wait, the more interesting issues could get.
It's, it's ironic because I did see that email about the, uh, selectmen in Chatham monitoring what the, um, state considered to be a mild drought, but it rained like hell yesterday, so hopefully that helped a little bit. We'll see.
Yeah, I'll date today.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but, no, I think you're right. I think, I think that's a good idea. So we'll, we'll shoot for the eighteenth, and if we're, we're informed that, um, we either have to split it out and, and bring part of it to August 1st, we'll do that, or if they're not going to be prepared fully until the first, we'll do it on the first. How's that?
Sure.
So we have a rain date, so to speak, right? August, uh, July 18th was the rain date of August 1st on water wellness. Good. Anything else? Any suggestions, uh, coming from you, Bob? As to things we have to get to? You know what we ought to, you know what we ought to do is on this tracking part at the back, um, that we looked, some of this stuff, believe it or not, we're actually addressing. Like, change name of board of selectmen to Select Board, outline steps. So we, we got to vote to put that on the next annual meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we don't have to carry that anymore, do we? And then, um, Mattakee's Middle School Reuse Committee Charge Discussion. We don't have to carry that anymore, right? Uh, update on water quality conditions. Dan just said that, but we'll leave it there because that's probably an ongoing, um, item of concern. Um, trying to see if there's anything on here.
Forest Road is on our agenda coming up.
Right, the eleventh.
What is?
Forest Road.
Yep, yep. But I got a funny feeling we should leave that alone because I think that's going to be ongoing for a while, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
Legislative WK Route 6A update. Okay.
The representative and senator updates?
You said, huh?
Is that something? Because we have a grant in and we also have the DP legislation apparently coming down. I don't know if that would be a good timing.
All right, so we'll, we'll work this. We got a little ways to go, but I'm sure it'll fill up with stuff. It always does. Anybody have anything else for the moment? Okay, thanks for your input. Those are all good suggestions. Individual items. I'm gonna break my silence. Um, Saturday, we had the grand opening of the new all-inclusive playground and, um, Tracy used to always refer to it as a splash pad, but I, I know the CDM had a different term for it, but it's, it's a place where the kids go and all kinds of water shoots out and everything like that. Unfortunately, it was a very dismal rainy day. Not the kind of, but it was, but it was well attended. Um, Dorcas was there, representing the board. I was there, representing the board, and Bob was there. And if you can believe this, he actually went into the splash pad with that freezing ice water. And, um, his, uh, his therapist is trying to, trying to work him through, through the aftermath of it all, but it was a really cold day. Rec Commission was there, um, trying to think of who else, um...
Uh, Jeff was there.
Jeff Colby was there, um...
Amanda Lima, engineer. She did a lot of work.
So I mean, it's the kind of thing, you get all this publicity out there and you wake up and it's like the worst possible weather, so you can't say how the heck would it... But it was well attended, wasn't it, considering the weather?
It was very well attended, and, and I'll tell you, for those of us that, you know, spent a, a lot of time up at the Sandy Pond, you know, park area there, it really had such, just a wonderful, noticeable effect on the, just the overall appearance, the quality of the park, the restrooms are being renovated, the space, it's, the, the place that was, had the, it was just kind of an open field with a couple of picnic tables. And I remember there were, you know, little pieces of gr- glass that you had to avoid. Now, now it's a beautiful facility and available for all the kids.
Dan, if the grandchildren ever come down, you, you got to bring them there. I mean, they'll freak out. It's, 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 it's a really, really incredible place. I, I was very surprised that the... There's a couple, in my opinion, minor design things that have to be worked out. For example, just before you go into the water area, there's like this little tree belt with plants and it's got mulch there. Well, the kids don't walk around that. They walk right through the mulch and they bring it into the splash pad. That, that should probably either have a fence around it or even take it out and put in some kind of a stone bed in there or something. Um, there's little things like that that you, that you notice and that were pointed out to me by, um, some people, but it is incredible. I mean, it is a state-of-the-art facility and, and the equipment is all beautiful stuff. Um, it's got, you know, age things, little markers. This is like age six to twelve. This is like age two to five. Little keys like that, but it's, it's beautiful equipment, isn't it?
Oh, very high quality. The climbing apparatus, not just like the splash area, is that it's totally handicap accessible, all-inclusive. But adjacent to that is a beautiful, just playground area for all kids and, and some of the climbing apparatus. Very nice, very nice job they did. And it's complete ADA, the material that they used for the, um, you know, the, the ground. You know, you don't just throw down wood chips these days.
It's very spongy, the ground. It's not hard at all. So like when you walk on it, your feet kind of sink into it. It's really cool. And that, and that, um, the water park part of it, or whatever you call it, it's on like a cycle. So the kids can press it. It's like on a two-minute cycle. So all of a sudden, all these jets of water start coming out of the floor. And then there's another part that holds buckets of water and you walk under it and it just dumps them upside down. And, and you just go through, and it's really cool.
What's wonderful is that we have a playground now that everyone in town can use. There isn't anyone in town that can't use that.
I think the other one was about 1.7 million for that, for that part. But, but it's night and day. I just hope, because they said they did have some problems with vandals there, even during the construction. I hope we're not going to have problems with that because, I mean, it, it is so nice. It really is that, um, I'm just hoping it's preserved for all the kids and families that have yet to use the, the facility. But I'm telling you, I don't know of any kid that wouldn't love to, uh, have that experience.
The kids that were there, they couldn't, the minute they opened the, the gates, they were boom.
Well, look at Bob. You couldn't keep him out.
You couldn't keep him out. You couldn't pull him away. I, I had my professional consultant, seven-year-old son, testing it out.
Oh, yeah, he was there. Von was there.
We, we couldn't get him to leave, so that's a vote of confidence right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it was nice. It was a nice event.
The ship's theme is kind of, you know, so appropriate too to the Cape. It's...
It's too bad we didn't get better weather, you know?
Oh, I know, I know.
Um, Dorcas, what did you say? What'd you think about it?
I, I loved it. I absolutely loved it. I mean, it, um, we've, the Recreation Commission held that as one of their major, um, goals, and to see it in fruition was just fantastic. We wanted to be able to have a place where anyone in town could go, and that's the wonderful thing about that. And it, you know, the ship's theme is fantastic and, um, there, there's something there for everyone.
There is.
There really is something there for everyone. And, uh, I think the testimony now will be seeing all the kids playing at it. We'll know we did good when we see all the kids playing there.
Well, you get some hot sunny days and I, I, I think you will see it.
Oh, yeah.
The word will get up quick. Word will get up quick. And I guess those, um, all that water apparatus is set on timers. It won't go on until a certain time of the day. And at a certain time at night, it'll shut down automatically, which is good.
It doesn't just keep running continually.
Um, I hope the drought doesn't interfere with our water supply.
We'll have to shut her down.
This may have to.
So, anybody else have any individual items they want to bring up? No? Okay. Town administrator consent agenda. Um, we have an approval of Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce summer... Oh, can I ask the board to, um, pull that item? Because I want to vote something in addition on that. Where, I mean, I'll tell you why in a minute. Okay, a couple of times, these summer concerts got like rained out. And we'll get a request from the chamber, and we don't have time to have a full board meeting. So I would approve the, um, as a licensing chairman, I would approve the, the rain date, so to speak. So what I would like someone to do is make a motion, um, to grant this entertainment license. Also, with the proviso, that the licensing chair, um, can add necessary makeup dates if, if, um, they get, they get rained out or weather, bad weather.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. With passes three zero. Because we get these things and I, I know darn well the board wouldn't say, no, you can't have a concert, but technically, we don't have any time to re-advertise it and get it before the board. So I just go out there on that limb and say, yeah, go ahead and do it. But now we, I got authorization to do it, so that's, that's great. Um, so Bob, you want to take care of the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes, the second item is, we have a request for the Seaside Festival annual license and bonfire permit for their events, and it's going to be at Sears Field and Smugglers Beach, October 7th, October 8th, with the craft fair, 10 to 5, and the bonfire at 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And we additionally have a donation from the National Active and Retired Federal Employees Group, $200 to the town.
I'd move the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes three to zero.
Just as an aside, you know, um, keeping in mind what we did for the St. Patty's Day parade, I think we should keep the Seaside Festival in mind to bring that committee in. That's a hard-working committee.
Yes, it is.
And, um, I think they need to have their moment for us to show our appreciation to them.
I think, um, we formally, don't get me wrong, I'm 100% in favor of what you just said. I think we formally did recognize Jan Butler before my giving, having her come in and giving her a citation. She started that, I believe, around 1978 and continues to do it to this day. That's, that's incredible.
Amazing.
Um, the one challenge that I'm aware of that they've had in the past was funding that, um, um, for the parade and, and, you know, they couldn't kind of, they couldn't kind of balance the book, so they cut out the Seaside Festival Parade, which they used to have for many, many years. So that would be a good idea to have that committee come in and talk to them and see how we can help them. That's a great, that's a great idea, but that, that's another group that, they deserve a world of praise for what they do.
They certainly do.
Um, I'm wondering how our friends at Bray Farm did because they, they moved their, they usually have their, um, sheep shearing event, their bigger, which I think is their biggest event, on Father's Day. So they moved it up a day ahead on Saturday. I think it maybe, I, I'm assuming their thought process was that they were going to get more people and they got rained out. It rained like all day. So I'm sure, I'm sure they probably got, got hurt on that. We'll have to follow up and see what we can do for them. I, I haven't heard anything from them. I just know it was a really bad weather that day.
Hmm.
I think the St. Patrick's Day, I don't remember the date, but it was on Facebook. They already set the date for next year. Um, we'll have to get that date and get it out there.
Speaking of gender items, um, weren't we going to try to get CEDC in earlier to talk about that issue?
We were.
Yeah, so that might be something you want to play around with.
We've been, we've been working it and, um, they've declined a couple of dates. And so they're coming in July 11th.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, July 11th. Okay, town administrator updates. Tell us all the good things that have been happening.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not everything that's been happening has been, um, real good, but we got some critical things to update you on. I really feel terrible, poor Mary Wagon. You can actually come, come on.
I have my email.
I know she stayed tonight because, um, you know, this is something we've been eating, sleeping and, and drinking, but, you know, we had on Saturday another major event in town during the afternoon with a, a fire that occurred at the Yarmouth Commons. And, and as you know, Mary Wagon, as a housing specialist, her efforts have just been yeoman's that, you know, we're working to try to advocate on behalf of the residents of that facility to make sure that they're protected and, and kept well. But just a couple of words on, um, what happened. It was in building number two, which houses 30 units. There was a fire in one of the units up on the third floor. It was caused in the kitchen by, um, people left food cooking, left the, um, the apartment and, and it caught fire. And it spread to the cabinets in, in the kitchen area. Now, you know, ordinarily, that, that could be a very, very serious type of a fire, and, and it was a serious event for, um, I, I really want to call out the, um, Fire Department for the town of Yarmouth and also... I, I really want to call out the, um, Fire Department for the town of Yarmouth, and also Dennis Fire was on scene as well. And, uh, the Yarmouth Police had, had a big role in coordinating the response, because it's a very dense area. There's a lot of people, there's a lot of activity. And to have an event like, like this with all of those units, they're all full, and the other buildings are full. And, and so there's a lot, a lot of people with, with that event. Now, in terms of the fire piece of it, the building is fully sprinkled. So the sprinklers functioned exactly as designed and put out the initial fire before it was able to spread from that unit. The, um, Fire Department responding to the scene, uh, you know, their role is, you know, they have to get up to that unit as soon as possible. And then they search with their hand lines, you know, after, um, you know, demobilizing the whole sprinkler system. They search for hotspots with their hand lines and then manage the fire from, from that standpoint. Now, um, the, as, as I say, the, the fire was limited just to the kitchen area in that, in that one unit because of the sprinklers. It, it caught it quick. But when you're with that process, there's a tremendous amount of water, especially up on the third floor, that was released into the building. And so that causes, uh, damage to the building, potential damage to the building. It renders the building uninhabitable for a short period of time. So the, um, following, when, when all of our units were, were able to clear, and, and again, it was, it was quite a, a management issue, uh, you know, getting to that with all of the people there. The, also, I, I want to mention Building Commissioner Mark Grills, his whole team, the Health Department. Everyone at, at our town level is just completely engaged right now. The, the building had to be shut down and secured, and it, and it is not currently habitable until the, um, the Wingate Company that is the property manager, they have a restoration firm, Restore 24, that is onboard now. And they're conducting the restoration operations that they need to get those units back up to where they're habitable. And again, there's 30 units. The town has stepped up in, in, in a couple of ways. We've mobilized a emergency shelter at the Matta Key School, because that we could get up quicker than we could do at, at the high school. It's just too much lead time for this type of an emergency. Opened the shelter last night, as of last night, we didn't have anyone that needed that shelter. The, we have the Red Cross, though, completely engaged. And, um, through working with the, the Red Cross, the property owners, uh, there's been, um, people that have been housed at the Irish Village, new one in Hyannis, and there's people that have been issued some vouchers from the Red Cross. We have the shelter open, so we're also, uh, working to try to leverage, and Mary has been just unbelievable at this. As many resources that we can get working with the property owners, as well as the, the funding agencies to clarify all of the responsibilities, which appear to fall directly on the property management company to provide this, um, relocation assistance, emergency shelter. And, and we're not gonna stop until every one of those folks is accounted for. We hope it's gonna be a speedy process getting the building back up and running. But it's a little tricky, anytime that you have such extensive water damage, you have to check out the electrical. You have to check out the insulation, you have to check out the sheet rock. All of these things have to be addressed and, and certain instances replaced. So, uh, we're, we're just trying to manage that on a day-to-day basis with as many resources as we can to try to get that building up and running again. And I, I was just so extremely impressed by not only the, um, first responders, who really had a yeoman's effort. I mean, it's a big building and a big area, and, um, so it's, it's quite an issue to get in there and, and get that squared away. But all of the people on the administration side, from the building commissioners, Mary's office. I don't know, Mary, what did I leave out that the board needs to know for?
Yeah, no, um, right, the emergency shelter, some people have found housing, you know, with friends and family, some with vouchers. Um, and we've also contacted the owner, which is Dakota Properties, they have a large portfolio of units. So they're checking their vacancies, if they have any vacancies. They own, um, Village Green in Hyannis, um, so there could be a possibility. Especially, uh, you know, I'm thinking about the, the units that were kind of close to the epicenter of the disaster might be, uh, closed longer than some of the other units. We also have some contacts at the county that have helped us identify possible support from the state. Um, and also, we're a community development block grant community, so we have contacts at US Hut. So we've, we've sent out a lot of emails. Um, this is an extraordinary week for this all to happen, right? Because it's 4th of July vacation, you know? So a lot of people are on vacation, and a lot of our motel units are already full. So we have to be really, really diligent in making sure, um, that people are getting the, the sheltering that they need. We have a meeting tomorrow at 3 o'clock with the property management team of Yarmouth Commons, Wingate. And also Yarmouth Gardens, which is the newer building down in, uh, West Yarmouth. That's Can Management, so they're both coming. We had this pre-scheduled a couple of weeks ago, so anyways, we're taking advantage of it. And people are gonna come, and we're gonna talk about this. And, um, also, uh, I think it's important that Yarmouth Gardens is there, so they can hear, um, any tips to make sure that our newer building, which is 40 units of affordable housing, two buildings of 20 each, you know, doesn't have the same problem. So.
So we're trying to stress, I, I think one of the most important things is that we're, we're learning from, from this type of incident. The role of these management companies in fire safety and general safety is absolutely critical. You know, we need to make sure those units are inspected on a very regular basis. All of the, you know, people tend to do things like disconnect the smoke alarms.
Oh, that's all the time.
And, uh, they, they have a tendency to, if you, if you disconnect some of the fire door, like striking plates, so that you can get in and out quicker, uh, you know, that has a safety implication. Are people prepared in the event that the alarms go off? Are you, uh, we spent a lot of time going door-to-door trying to vacate individual apartments. The people were ignoring the, um, you know, the alarms, uh, you know, not sort of complying, it just, you know, it, there, there was a, a lot of disorganization that, that we think that by working closer with these management companies, that we could prepare in these densely developed areas in case there's some type of fire. People need to get out, get out quick, and they need to get out of the way of the first responders, they need to just, so we think that we can make a lot of improvements on, on the way those things happen. So we're, you know, I wouldn't say it's a fortunate situation. We were very fortunate that there was no loss of life or injury.
Yeah.
In this event, so, uh, we're just gonna try to take that and, and, you know.
Was the entire building vacated?
Yes.
Now, with the fire damage in that one unit, I, I know there's a lot of water, you know, water, water follows gravity, right? So I get that. Was, but was there actual fire damage in any of the other units?
Smoke.
Oh, yeah.
There's no fire in the other units, but there was, there was smoke in some of the other units.
Smoke and water.
Let me tell you something, I had a fire in my building back many years ago. And people underestimate smoke damage. Unfortunately, the fire was in the cold weather months, and it burned, and it started in the basement. So it burned out all the utilities, all the electric cables, everything. But we didn't have a fire in our unit, but they did down below. But there was soot all over the off, over everything, walls, ceilings, computer equipment. You wouldn't believe what smoke damage does, it was incredible. The other thing is burned wood, or burned materials from smoke has an incredibly obnoxious odor to it.
Yeah.
And they coat it with this white stuff, I don't even know what it is, which also has a quasi-sickening smell to it, 'cause it's a very, very sweet odor to kill the, and it takes a long time for that to normalize. And, uh, so is there any estimates as to how long these people are gonna be out of there, or is it too soon for that?
It's a little too soon, you know, if there wasn't so much water damage, right? It'd be days, right? But, um, our, our inspectional services are just doing a great job. Our electrical inspector and our building inspectors are just doing a great job. And they want the electrical system to be tested. Is it Mergar, is that the test? They're asking for like a full test of the whole system.
Before they, yeah.
Before they go forward. You know, they're taking out, um, you know, pieces that are wet right now, and they're, they've got heaters and fans in there to try to get the moisture out. Unfortunately, it's been so humid, you know? But, um, if it wasn't for all the water, you know, um, more people would get in there quicker. But, um, I don't, I don't, I think they were hoping for this weekend, but I don't, I don't think so.
I remember when we had all the water damage in Town Hall with the freeze-up, I mean, they, you couldn't use, you saw it for a long time. And they had all these, like you said, heaters and fans and whatever, they were planted out in the hallways and.
Right.
This, this whole area was closed off for a very long time, months.
I am really happy to hear that you're meeting with the, uh, management companies.
Yeah.
Because, um, from my past perspective as a director, as the manager at Heatherwood Senior Living Community, you need an emergency plan. You need to work with the Fire Department, there should be scheduled, um, fire drills on an annual basis. When you're dealing with a building that size. I'm sure that the Fire Department has all kinds of suggestions for the building managers as to how they could do that. But this is an opportunity and a wake-up call to, um, all those properties to.
And, and these are two, um, management companies that are new to these sites.
Hmm.
So a lot of the things that, that they've inherited, some of these things.
Hmm.
Um, including, you know, um, tenant behavior.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, and what was nice to hear, and this was before the fire, we went, we went to the, on the site, is it on June 13th? To, uh, the, the address we talked about before, where Mr. Clary was here, 897 Route 28. But before that, we had gone to both sites and met the new property management, and they both want to do kind of like a social gathering with the tenants, with town people, so that we can kind of talk about these kinds of things. You know, there's, there's some ways to, to make cooking in your kitchen very safe. So I think that's gonna be one of the main themes when we bring the Fire Department out to meet all the tenants after this is all settled.
So they actually, they just like have the fire run?
It was an accident. That's what the Fire Department has said, it's an accident, unfortunately.
Was there some food that was cooking or something?
Unfortunately, when the flames started, the, the tenants weren't actually in the unit, which is, what happened is there was nobody there to put it out, so it really caught.
Was that they, that they were cooking some, um, pizza in the air fryer. And it was done or something, and they took it out of the air fryer and, and put it on the stove, but didn't know that the, the stove was lit.
Okay.
And then they left, and then it ignited, and then caught the cabinets.
They, they weren't home, you know what I mean? Like, in a way, it's good, 'cause it was, but also, there was nobody there to, you know, go run into the hallway, get the fire extinguisher, put it out. So it, it, you know.
Once you leave, and the stove is on, you know, that's a recipe right there for a problem.
Yeah, I agree.
But the sprinklers worked, the sprinklers put out the fire.
You know what would be interesting is, is what coverages they had on the building, the owners of the property, and.
Built 2019, so I have a feeling that.
Whether they have loss-of-use coverage for, for tenants, or whether that responsibility, uh, is on the tenants.
We're investigating.
To insure for that. I mean, normally, a tenant would insure for that, or, or somebody in a condo that owned the condo unit would insure against loss-of-use. You know, so I don't know.
I'm hearing that the loss-of-use amount is limited?
Yeah, oh, there's usually limits, sure.
There's a limit. Going forward, we might want to encourage, uh, property owners to bump up that limit.
Either that, or make, um, make a pitch to, to tenants too, with, with the coverage.
Yes, yes. Um, I, I, they gave me some documents to look at. I guess that each tenant is encouraged in writing to purchase renters insurance, which is, is, uh, the property management company and the owner is supposedly not responsible for things that are lost due to the fire or the water damage. But if they had, but renters insurance would cover it. So there'll be a big discussion about that, too.
Are there basements in those buildings?
I don't think so, no. We, we made them, uh, have larger, uh, uh, storage capacity in each unit, uh, be, because they didn't want to do a basement storage area, 'cause it gets, it's hard to manage.
Um, I'm, I'm asking the question simply because tornadoes, we've now seen that we can have a tornado in Yarmouth. And that, when we're talking fire, we're, we're really talking all the different potential disasters that could happen for that building. And evacuation becomes a, you know, a key, key one. Those buildings don't have gas in them, do they?
I don't think so, I think it's all electric.
So you don't have to worry about the gas leak, but tornadoes you do.
They have those windows that are hurricane-proof.
Hmm.
Remember that, they, I guess, first they ordered them on.
Lots of sure hurricane-proof and tornado-proof are the same thing.
Same thing, no.
Those tornadoes are powerful, powerful storms. I remember the last tornado we had here. I went on a tour of the most heavily damaged areas with, um, Governor Baker and some others. Down by Springer Lane in Yarmouth and so forth. I mean, the, almost everything was leveled down there. They just, they hit a certain swath. It's not like a broad-based thing, but anything in their path, they just, they just wipe out, cars, trees. They had a big motel roof, they just, it ripped it right off, remember that? Um, those storms are incredible, absolutely incredible. The one they had down in Springfield, um, I can't remember the year, but it went from Western Mass all the way up through, um, Palmer in that area. And it just took everything, it just took everything out, it just leveled it.
So you ready for a new topic?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout-out to all my coworkers. People have been calling in, you know, you know, and, and funneling the phone calls to me. But really, your office staff and the town clerk's staff, uh, has just been so kind to people calling up all worried about this, so.
I'd be anxious to hear how this shakes out.
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll be giving you an update.
Probably more, probably more than one.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, Bob, what's next?
All right, this is a kind of a big one. I, I have an update that I, I've hinted as to the possibility of this, but, um, I had a meeting today with the Clean Energy Center with respect to the Solar Wolf debacle, where that company took everyone's money and didn't perform on the solar contracts. And, and obviously, the Clean Energy Center has felt as terrible about this whole situation as the town had, seeing it was, you know, their program that ultimately did not succeed. So they've been working on it throughout the bankruptcy proceeding, and they're, they've announced to us today that they've developed, and, and this was made part of the bankruptcy filing, but, but now they're in a position to move forward with a program that is designed to make all of the Solar Wolf Yarmouth customers whole.
Oh, that'd be great.
And what they propose to do is to, uh, and, and this is a program that is gonna be funded split by the Clean Energy Center and the Sun Power Corporation, which was the manufacturer of those panels that they selected Solar Wolf, because it had that high quality. because it had that high-quality sun power panel. And, and what they propose to do is offer to finish the solar installations on homeowners' homes for the remaining balance on their original contracts. So it's roughly twenty-five thousand for a standard installation. And, and a lot of people were in a position that, well, you know, you needed to provide fifty percent down, and then they would buy the thing and come back and they, so you provide your fifty percent down to twelve thousand five hundred, and then they steal the money. So what, what they're saying now is that if you paid that twelve thousand five hundred for the remainder on your contract balance would be the second twelve thousand five hundred, that they would finish the installation. And not in a situation that people would pay any more money upfront. You wouldn't pay till after it was completed. And I'm told that the, I don't have an exact amount, but the amounts of the cost of these systems in the couple of years that, that, you know, it's been going on, has really gone up a lot too. So I, I think that's a major issue there. I, I'd like to get behind it, you know, as a town and offer the same people. But we're not gonna have any new customers. But what we wanna make sure is we keep the committee involved. They have the database, and we wanna make sure that every customer that got bilked out of that money has the opportunity to decide if they wanna participate in this program, which would, again, make them whole, so.
I don't see why they wouldn't want, wouldn't wanna do that.
Yeah, I, I think so too. And I, and I think it'd be an important step for the town to kinda support these efforts. We were major pushes in encouraging the Clean Energy Center to, to help us take, you know, responsibility to, to make these people whole. And, and so we've been advocating very strongly for that. And, and I'm, I'm happy to see that, that they've responded in what I consider to be a very, a very fair way.
Isn't this other company, they're not even part of the bankruptcy proceeding, right? Uh, uh, Sun Power?
Well, they are tangentially because I think one of the reasons why Solar Wolf went bankrupt is because they owed so much money to Sun Power. Sun Power wound up having to shut them off because they were taking the money and they, and they were ordering panel, they weren't paying. You know, they took people's money, but with no intention of paying Sun Power. So I think Sun Power was out a, a lot of money too. And then, and I, and I think that they came in and they had to take back some of the material that, that they floated without being paid. So they had a filing in there, and they're, they're involved with it. And through working with that company and, and their attorneys and the Clean Energy Center, I, I don't know, I, to me, it's like magic how they came up with that. But, but I, I think it's wonderful for local residents. And, and their feeling is, and I, and I really appreciate this, that they didn't wanna have, you know, people out there that felt like that they were participating in this state program to support solar that regretted that they did that. And so I, I, I think that's a key piece of it. So, so that's gonna be moving forward. And I'd like to keep the board involved in it. I, I think a lot of it was our leadership pushing it. But, but, you know, let's face it, we didn't fund it. The Clean Energy Center came up, they decided that they would fund this, which that's really what we needed, is that help. And then that and working with that Sun Power company, which is a big company. And, and I think the two of them, you know, they sort of.
Yeah, I think I read something about this proposal and that it had to be approved by the bankruptcy judge. I'm assuming it was approved?
Yes, that's what we received. It was approved by the bankruptcy judge, and they had a period, a waiting period to see if it would be.
Yeah, an appeal period, yeah.
And then that has gone away too. So now what they're doing is they're putting in, you know, the final contracts. Now, they're gonna have some documents that they're, they're gonna share with us. Obviously, everybody wants to, you know, the ideas, we make everyone whole, and no one follows through with additional claims, right? You get your solar, and you agree that that's what you accept.
Yeah, they put you in the same position as you would have been had Solar Wolf performed.
Correct.
So it's like in the example you gave, it was, if it was twenty-five thousand, you put down twelve-five. They'll finish it, you give them twelve-five.
Great.
You're whole, right?
Yeah, on a system that's probably thirty to thirty-five now.
That's a great result though for people.
I think it's a great result. Now, people could say, well, you know, I lost my revenue for that year. And of course, that's true. And not only that, but there's the pain and suffering. But I, I think that this is the best of that we could have hoped for.
You only get pain and suffering in personal injury cases. And the other thing is, they can say, well, you know, I've been without this. Usually, in a bankruptcy case like this, you don't get anything.
No.
This is extraordinary, it really is. Great result for these people.
So we'll, we'll keep pushing it. I'll get more information for the board. But I, I hope to see us in a position to, to help, you know, and, and I think a lot of people will feel a lot better once we get over this hump. It was, that was a tough situation all around. So that's the Clean Energy Center solar program. We have a meeting, we've been pushing for this, as you know. And just this afternoon, I heard that the Department of Transportation has an update on their design that they are.
Oh, good.
Finally happy with, on the streetscape with the Route twenty-eight project and, on that corridor. And we have a meeting at ten AM on July five. So I remember we had Mark and Mike sat in on that first one. I think we should definitely have a couple of selectmen there and hear what DOT has to say about their project, and we can bring it back to the board, try to have some more sessions. But it's gonna be July five at ten AM. I know that's not a great date, but we're gonna do it in conference room A, and it's also gonna be a remote situation as well. And the last item that I had is that I brought in the watershed permit regulations that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Mark said you were gonna have an update on that, yeah.
And I've reviewed them in, in detail. I, I don't think that, that folks want a, a detailed reading of, you know, their, their thirty pages, each one. But essentially, the three fourteen CMR twenty-one is the change in the watershed permit regulations. It creates a new watershed permit. And through this process, what they've done is formalize that creation of the nitrogen-sensitive areas, which includes almost all of, of Yarmouth. And when you're in a nitrogen-sensitive area, you, you have the opportunity to get a new permit, which is a watershed permit. And some of the things that, you know, we were very apprehensive because what the regulations did is they completely ignored, you know, the, the first draft regulations, all of the initial work that we had done over a period of years, at, at hundreds of thousands of dollars of cost to develop these comprehensive wastewater management plans, which we have a recently approved comprehensive wastewater management plan. And, and you can't create a completely new animal in a watershed permit and not have a link from one to the other. And so they were able to, they incorporated language. The primary change, in my view, from the draft that we initially had, is that they created a bridge, at least on paper, saying that the, an approved comprehensive wastewater management plan, it meets all the technical standards, can be used in all our part as a watershed management permit. Now, it's very important because what, what we had made, you know, time and time again, is we wanted to have RCWMP, that management plan, be the watershed permit. And that way, we know that we're in compliance with it. Now, the, the key thing, again, with DEP, it says over and over, if the department deems it to be. So they still have the authority to reject the CWMP that they don't feel meets the standards. But they have definitely established a level of intent here to consider those CWMPs. In a community like ours, I think we, we would get primary consideration because the CWMP is so fresh, and it, and it's been so recently approved. So all of the procedures on, on how to move through that process are included under the watershed permits. And the sister regulation is three-ten CMR fifteen hundred. So three fourteen CMR is the watershed permit, three-ten CMR are the changes to, to Title V. Now, those are the regulations that incorporate the requirements to change your septic system, to a septic system that is able to get less than ten, you know, milliliters or milligrams per liter of nitrogen.
Enhanced nitrogen removal systems.
Enhanced nitrogen removal.
Right.
System. And, and so what it says essentially, in a nutshell, similar to it, that it did before, that all people need to do this unless, so every resident would need to upgrade their system, existing systems. If you put a new system in, it would have to be a nitrogen removal, unless the town adopts a nitrogen management permit that says otherwise. And, and so that's what, what we intend to do, is use our CWMP under the CMR fourteen to apply for a watershed permit and to make it so that residents don't have to do the upgrade. And, and the one thing that they did, I, I thought was very helpful, is that we initially, you know, a number of things that, that we had as, as concerns, that I thought were very real concerns. First and foremost, the proposed regulations had it in five years, everyone had to have their system upgraded. So now what it does is they, they create like more of a two-year window for registration. What do they call it? It's a notice of intent and application period, after which the five-year window starts. So what they've changed by creating this new application sort of period is they've changed the requirement from five years to seven years. So people pick up an additional two years. If your community fails to go for a watershed permit, then instead of having to change your system out in five years, it's, it's seven years. And the other item is, is that, again, they make it subject to the DEP approval. You know, we told them, if, if you make everyone upgrade, first of all, there aren't enough of these systems, there aren't enough contractors, and the cost would be prohibitive. They've indicated that if it turns out that to be the case, that they have the right to suspend the program until either there's enough contractors or the cost is more reasonable. But it makes it all, if the DEP determines that's what they wanna do. It, it doesn't guarantee anyone anything. So the regulations are in place, they take effect, I believe, July seven. If you have them, I'll send them out. I have, I have a redlined copy that I think is very helpful, that it shows the changes from the previous draft. So you can track each change.
Yeah, can you scan those to me?
I have them electronic, I could email them directly, yeah.
Good. So what do we have, five years to get the comprehensive wastewater, not the, I mean, the watershed permit?
At this point, I think you could claim that, that we have seven, because they, they added that two-year. So if.
I thought the two years was just for like individuals, no?
What they're saying is that the five-year, right? Cause you're going from one red to the other.
Yeah.
The, people have five years, it still says that, to install the, the system. But it's five years from the end of this two-year period. So July seven starts the two-year clock ticking. So if I'm a local resident and I'm saying, well, well, how long do I have before I have to change my system? You get your two-year period, and at the end of that two-year period, it starts the five-year clock ticking. So what, our hope is that we're gonna start, I mean, obviously, first and foremost, our number one priority is implementing the phase one. So we're not gonna stop implementing phase one. We're gonna push that on our schedule as fast as, as we can. But that's gonna, you know, start up this year, and, and that'll free some time. We're gonna have to talk about the engineering firm putting together the, the packet to make our application for a watershed permit, which we're not gonna wait on. So within the next year, we're gonna have that, hopefully, that process completed, such that, that we'll have a watershed permit application in place. So we're not gonna wait till the end of the five-year period. We're gonna try, I think we're better off trying to get signed up before we even implement phase one. And then, and then that, and these are twenty-year permits too. So what they're saying is that they, they'd like it if, if we were as far along as possible by the end of twenty years. And, and I think we definitely wanna get a permit while our baseline is basically zero, so that we can get credit for all of this, everything we construct is part of it.
Is there, is there a provision in there that they can, under certain circumstances, extend that twenty-year period?
Yes, it's, it's meant to be like a forever type of situation. What, what, there's a lot of language about if towns don't make the progress. One thing that was good is, is that they had a, an annual report. Now, it's a, you know, that's a lot of work for a town to give an annual report. How'd you do on your twenty-year plan? Every single year. So they changed that to every five years, you have to make a report. Now, if you, if you don't make any progress, they can cancel your permit. But if you're making progress, they can extend the permit. And so that's the idea, is you, you start the process, you make clear progress. You might not be done in twenty years, but you're making enough progress that they extend that. And it's contemplated. They don't have to. If, you know, they decide they're upset with you, or they don't like what you're doing, they can cancel or revoke your permit, they can refuse to extend it. But I, I don't really, you know, see those type of goblins. I, I, I see the language is clear that if you're leading your, you know, steps, that they'll continue to work with you. So that's the watershed permits, well, I'll send these out.
When you said, when you said about a year in, we're gonna try to get our watershed permit, is there gonna be any, any adaptation off our comprehensive wastewater permit? Or is that material pretty much what we're gonna be submitting under the auspices of a watershed permit?
I'll tell you, it's my intention right now of, you know, lock, stock, and barrel, putting in our current plan, that I don't see us necessarily changing the plan to apply for this watershed permit. We have some flexibility in the future phases of if, if the DEP feels that our progress in a given watershed is not fast enough. We do have some flexibility, but, and, and again, I, I haven't had a high-level detailed discussion with Jeff Colby and, you know, CDM Smith, but it would be my intention to submit based on everything that's already been approved, and, and that's our initial take on the watershed permit. So, so that's what I'd like to see. And I, I don't think it should take a year to get that in. I mean, I, it's just a matter of how does that dovetail with all the work we're doing on, you know, we need to get that plant designed, we need to get all the stuff done. But, but I think we can start fashioning the approach to that. And, and, but I'm, I'm dying to see what, you know, CDM thinks in, in terms of.
You know what else I'm, I'm wondering about is with our common water bodies like Bass River and Lewis Bay, are they gonna evaluate us on this five-year basis as we go down the road based on the apparatus that we have in operation? Or are they gonna be looking at the nitrogen removal or the nitrogen levels in those water bodies to make that determination, which in part makes us dependent on the progress of our, our neighbors? Barnstable to the west and Dennis to the east.
Well, the regulations are clear. The regulations make us responsible only for the share of the nitrogen that we're contributing on our side.
Okay.
So we are not responsible for the nitrogen on the other side if, if they do nothing. But what they do encourage, and, and I, I think, you know, we have the ability to get in place, are the nitrogen agreements where we agree with Barnstable, that we're both gonna attack it, right, from our, each side of the watershed. And so I think that, that those types of agreements will be very helpful. And so I think that, that those types of agreements will be very helpful in the overall process. But the regulations are clear that if we move forward with our portion of it and another watershed does it, that we're not penalized for that.
Well, that's good, that's very good, yeah. I'm not worried about Yarmouth doing what they're supposed to be doing.
The other towns that we have no control over.
Anything else?
No, that's, that's it. I took a lot of your time tonight.
Do I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye, we adjourned.